I would like everybody to join us in an audience oat.
Who wants to speak?
Anybody who's going to speak or give any testimony, would you please raise your right hand?
Stand.
Or stand.
Please stand and raise your right hand.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Ex parte communication. This section is intended to allow officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure or ex parte communications about our public hearings. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yeah, I've had conversations with the residents regarding the Legato project.
Thank you. Commissioner again.
I've had numerous conversations with residents regarding this project.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yeah, I'll be recusing myself tonight. I work for a public affairs firm that up to a few weeks ago had worked with Legato, not on the Redondo project, but I just feel making sure that I'm not biased on either end, I should be recusing myself, so I will be doing that.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yeah, full disclosure, I had a conversation, a meeting with the mayor previously. I'd had a telephone conversation with Councilman Ginsburg, had a conversation as well with Commissioner Mitchell, and I had a conversation with the chair as well.
I've had various conversations with staff for the most part, and some with Commissioner Items excluded from the consent calendar, we don't have, do we have any? Let's move on to public hearings. Item number eight's been pulled, so we will go right into business. Item number nine is a public hearing to consider the approval and certification of mitigated negative declaration, initial environmental study, including responses to comments and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, a conditional use permit, planning commission design review including landscape and irrigation plan, sign review, minor subdivision, a vesting tentative tract map, and a request for a density bonus under government code section 65915-65918, which is state law, which includes a waiver concession of development standards, height, stories, and density, and parking standards for the construction of a mixed-use development that include 180 residential apartment units, approximately 37,600 square feet of commercial development, and renovation of an existing 100-room hotel with a total of 614 parking spaces on a property located within a mixed-use MU3A zone. Applicants: Legato Redondo, and the location is 1700 South Pacific Coast Highway, case number 2015-03-PC-005.
We all move. We open the public hearing and receive and file the documents. Second.
Hearing no objection. So work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. We're pleased to have the opportunity tonight to address the planning commission on this important project, and we're also pleased that there's so much public interest in the project before you. Tonight you will receive a number of technical presentations on the 1700 PCH project, along with our best professional recommendation, and we are going to be recommending that some changes to the project as you'll see through our presentation this evening. You also receive testimony from the public, and that will enable you to better inform your questions and frame the issues that you'd like to address. These community issues are important to us. We do have experts here this evening. They will answer your technical questions. With us are Liz Colhane from Overland Traffic Engineering. We have Carly Kaufman from Rincon Environmental Consultants. We have Tyson Sohagie from Sohagie Law Group, our CQ expert. And of course, we have all of our great staff here this evening to answer your questions and to help out with the hearing. So with that, we'll begin with a presentation from Anita Kroger, followed by, I believe, an applicant presentation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. We are going to start the presentation this evening with looking at the vicinity map. This gives you a visual of where the property is located at the intersection of PV Boulevard and South PCH. It shows you a couple of other things. The zoning of the property is MU3A, as it is also to the south, then behind it to the east on Avenue G, we have RMD, which is medium-density residential, and then after that you have R1, which is single-family. That's sort of a classical hierarchy of zoning, where you put the most intense development at a node of an intersection on major roadways, and then you buffer it with medium-density residential, and then on the internal you have the single-family. So that's pretty typical. The other thing I wanted to note is, for the sake of ease of discussing this project, we will refer to PV Boulevard as going east and west, and South Pacific Coast Highway as going north and south, though we know it's not on those perfect compass points. All right? Thank you. Next, we're just going to run you through about five photographs. You can read, you can see where they're from, the north portion. I think by showing these photographs, it just refreshes our memory, but it also reminds us that it's a really large site, which cannot be photographed, you know, presented in one photograph. It's seen from many different angles, and you see different views depending where you're looking from. Next, please. Before we go any further, it's always good to point out we have two corrections. On the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, our environmental document, on page 42, it states that the building, meaning the Bristol Farms structure, underwent major renovations in 1990. That's not true. It was 2000. And in the staff report, on page 24, under a table called comparative scale of development, I made the error with the directions there, so it should be the east side and the west side of Avenue G. Thank you. Current development on the project. Well, we start off with the size of it, which is 4.275 acres. We know the location at the intersection. And the current development, we have the former Bristol Farms structure, we have six inline shops, and of course, the existing hotel. Surrounding it, as we showed on the vicinity map, we have multifamily to the east on Avenue G, to the west in the city of Torrance. And, oh yeah, I wanted to point out that west of the project is the city of Torrance, but even though they're not in our city, we have responded to many, many residents, and we have been in contact with the officials at the city of Torrance, so they're fully aware of this project. Talking about the general plan designation and zoning, which is MU, mixed-use 3A, some of you may be surprised to know that that zoning and designation has actually been in place since 1992. What does the general plan designation tell us, and the housing element, et cetera? All these governing documents, the general plan, the housing element, the zoning code, they all tell us that mixed-use is the right place to put density, to put the housing, and to create affordable housing opportunities. Again, just something about the site to keep in mind when we're talking about it. It's a corner lot. The lowest point is at the corner of the intersection, and the fact that it's quite a bit lower than the property to the east. Next. So here we have, it's basically the same view. I'm standing north of the hotel, and what you can see is a retaining wall between the subject property and the properties to the east on Avenue G. So depending on where you're standing, they're considerably higher. Okay, the project consists of various components. For starters, they're looking to demolish the existing market and the inline shops. The hotel, which is a four-story, about 50-foot-high, 110-room hotel, the plan is to renovate it. Most likely, the one portion that'll disappear is the lower portion in front where Shay Melange was once housed. Then there's the construction. We're looking at about 37,600 square feet of commercial space, 180 apartments, quite a large public open space, nearly 28,000 square feet, a considerable sum of private open space, and two and a half levels of parking that'll hold between the underground parking and the parking site on the other side of the hotel, there'll be a total of 614 parking spaces. Okay, looking at this slide, it's like a bird's-eye view of what the property is intended to look like. So if you start on the south and go to the north, maybe you want to point it out, we have the parking lot, which is the surface parking lot, right? Then we have the hotel, which is to exist. Then there would be an internal roadway, and that internal roadway ends up being an access road that goes around the rear of it. And then we have three residential structures. The large one to the east has 107 units. The one on the south, I think, has 43 units, and the one on the north, similar number of units. Then we're showing the two open spaces between the two residential structures, that's the private open space, and then in the corner we have the public open space, which is intended for anyone who wants to come onto the site and enjoy it. Thank you. Okay, this is an artist's rendering illustrating what the project should look like if it were to be approved. What you see is a corner plaza right at the intersection. By creating those stairs, it's a difficult site to work with because of the slope, so in order to get some flat surfaces, there are various levels that are leveled out, and the podium creates a level across the entire site. So we have the corner market, then we have the commercial storefronts that you see mostly facing PCH. Then there's a staircase and a glass elevator that would lead you up to the public open space. In the corner, you see there would be a small restaurant, and then there's public open space, which is framed by the residential structures. Thank you. Next. What are some of the other components or attributes? I think everyone's really interested in traffic and how it circulates, and we've got a slide that deals with that. I guess the lights are pretty bright. What we have is three different levels, and what it shows is that basically entering the site from each of four different driveways, you can circulate through the two and a half levels of parking and to the surface parking lot. So it's a very good internal circulation plan. All right, next. Yeah. Okay, so on the same vein, we want to bring up the fact that the applicant in this case is being required to dedicate property to the city, and we have a drawing of that as well. This dedication along Pacific Coast Highway helps provide a pedestrian-oriented environment, which means there's going to be a 12-foot-wide sidewalk created. It also makes room for various traffic improvements that we'll discuss later. Thank you. Talking about architecture, you've all probably seen the rendering and pictures. We would describe it as eco-contemporary, which means contemporary, current design, glass, straight lines, clean lines, and the eco refers to the fact that the style is softened by the use of wood and other types of materials. Let's see, do we have a landscape plan? We look at the landscape plans, we look at lighting, we look at signage, and the building will also feature various green features, different renewable materials, solar energy, et cetera. Yeah. We're just going to hand this color board around, color material board, so that, can you walk? Okay. So the commissioners can get a better sense of the materials. Okay, so let's talk more about the driveways. We talked about that there were two driveways off of PCH and two off of Palis Verdes Drive. Okay, let's talk about slide 17. I think that's the rendering. Then we'll go to the next one, please. This is just briefly, so you know that, you know, they spent a lot of time on landscaping plans, lighting plans, which is a lot of detail, given the conceptual nature of where we are in the process. Next, please. Okay, here's probably something we all want to know about, density bonus law. This is a state law, and to start off, we need to do a lot of mathematics. Basically, based on the current zoning of MU3, you can develop or build 35 units per acre, which translates to one unit for every 1,245 square feet of lot area. If you take the size of the lot with the given zoning, a developer is allowed to build 149 units on it. Now, there's a state law called the density bonus law, which the very intent of it is to accommodate and promote more affordable housing. What the law says is that if a development project provides affordable housing, they will get a density bonus, they'll be able to build more units, and they'll get other incentives, waivers, and we'll talk about them all. So if we do the math, Legato is looking at providing 6% of the units for very low-income housing. By doing so, it translates into a 22.5% density bonus. This is state law, so then if you take the 22.5% density bonus times 149 units, it results in 34 extra units. Taking the base number of 149 and 34, Legato or any developer for that matter would be able to build 183 units. They're coming in with 180 units, which is equivalent to about 42.1 units per acre. The law also says that at this level of bonus, we have to grant the developer one concession or incentive, and they have requested that that incentive be allowing them to go to a maximum height of 56 for some portions of the building versus the 45. They also requested as a waiver of development standard, again, the law says that shall be granted to build four stories, not just three. There's also a residential parking standard that comes with it. It allows one parking space to be provided for studios and bedrooms versus two units. Should this project be approved, there would be a housing agreement drafted that would be in place for a minimum of 30 years that will relate to the affordable units. As it says on the slide, "The city must grant this density bonus law unless specific legal findings can be made." Thank you. Okay, it's a little bit of a repeat, but we're talking about, okay, what are the development standards with the density bonus law? Right now, the project has an FAR, which is a floor-area ratio of 1.5. That means you can build as much as one and a half times square feet as the size of the lot. We've talked about the fact that with the density bonus, it's 180 units, four stories, 56 feet. We've talked about, well, you should know that this is a relatively new requirement for public open space. So this project provides 10% of the buildable area as public open space, which is equivalent to 15% of the site. It's a good percentage of the site for the project to give up, and it's meant to be a contribution to the community, so that the community has a place in the project. Then, as I mentioned, the parking, there's a total of 614, of which 552 are underground. Thank you. Here's another hefty topic, the environmental review. The IS MND, as we call it, which is the initial study and mitigated neg declaration, looks at a total of 17 areas. Now, there's a considerable amount of law and case law that governs this and standards, and looking at this, we had an environmental consultant who prepared these hefty documents here, and looking at all the 17 possible areas, the conclusion is that there are five areas that have potential for impact unless they are mitigated. And what I have beside them is each of the mitigation measures. Briefly, the air quality talks about the fact that there's certain emissions that can happen during construction with paint, so they're required to use low-vac paints. There's a condition about bird nesting. It says that you can't take down trees during the months, I believe it's August to December, because that'll affect the bird nesting. Then we have requirements for geology. It's got to do with the stability of the geography, geology, and there's numerous requirements that'll be adhered to during construction. Now, the two big ones, we'll go next, are traffic and utilities. So these are the big mitigation measures and the big-ticket items. Traffic, which we know many of you are concerned about, the mitigation measure looks at reconfiguring the lanes, widening the lanes, adding lanes, and changing the directional flow of the various lanes. Based on the science and the modeling, this mitigation measure should maintain and even improve the level of service during the PM, peak hours from E to D. The other big-ticket item is wastewater, sewer. Right now, our sewer system would not be able to accommodate this project. In order for the project to open, they're going to have to construct a new 12-inch mainline and upgrade a portion of the sewer to divert the sewage to proper accommodations. These are both pretty big-ticket items. The applicant is responsible to fund them and to implement them. Thank you. Okay. Part of the environmental review, for an EIR, cities are required to make responses to comments. They're not in this case, but we felt it was very, very important, given how much interest there is in the project. So what was, in September, the environmental documents were made available for a public review period that had a cutoff date, I believe it was September 8th. We received in total 82 comments that we responded to. Some of them were beyond the cutoff period, but we responded anyways. So we have a whole section that's part of the document where every single point that was requested by the individual making the comments was responded to, so it's also a hefty document. The number-one comment was about traffic. That's not surprising. We're all concerned about traffic congestion in the beach communities. Again, the great thing is that there's a number of mitigation measures as proposed that will work with the traffic and ease any increase in traffic congestion. A lot of people talked about parking, a lot of concerns about overflow parking into the adjacent neighborhoods. If you study the plan as long as we have, we conclude that it's a lot easier to use any of the four driveways and park in the vast amount of onsite parking than it is to go around the block and park, let's say, on Avenue G or somewhere else. People like convenience. People want to park absolutely as close as they can. So they're going to park, and we think that, and the parking that they're providing does meet all the standards. The other thing the project does, it promotes pedestrian activity and also cycling. There'll be one cycling locker for everyone in the project. Concerns about the access road, whether it's going to be noisy, what kind of activity. We don't think that it's going to create a lot of problems. The road is considerably lower than the project above, and unlike now where it's an open surface parking lot and people can mingle or gather, this is a pathway. Cars cannot stop here, you know, people cannot hang out. You have to travel on this roadway, so your car has to be in motion, and it has to, and that's it. People can't be, you know, hanging out there with the music on. So we're not that concerned, or we don't think it's going to generate that much noise or activity. Then another big one is the aesthetics. It's clear that some of the private views for people on Avenue G, not that many, will have their views obstructed. There's a whole study that has looked at this. The important thing to know is that the city of Redondo Beach does not have a private view protection ordinance. The only views that the environmental documents say that you have to protect is if they're official scenic views, and that's not the case. The other thing we look at is what about the scale of development? I think you'll hear a theme here from staff, and that we believe that if anything needs change in the project, it's the design of the most easterly structure. It's a very large structure, it runs a length of, I want to say, 330 feet, and there's no gaps in it. And so we think if there's any way to make this project more compatible with the neighborhood, it would be to look at redesigning the easterly structure. Thank you. Okay, this is a table that was put together to actually make a comparison of development standards. So as I explained, you know, on PCH, you have the highest zoning, MU3, and then you go to Avenue G, and you have the intermediate, medium residential zoning. The interesting thing is that when you look at the average density on Avenue G, between the east side and the west side, it's not that far off from what Legato is proposing. Now, of course, when you look at the floor-area ratio and number of stories, Legato exceeds it, but that is what's expected when you're in a more intense mixed-use zone on a node on a highway. Next, please. The entitlement process. In order for this project to be approved, the planning commission has to adopt a finding regarding the environmental report. MRP refers to mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. So these mitigation measures, it's established who's responsible for it, the specifics of the measures, and the schedule to have them implemented. After looking at the environmental process, we look at the actual project entitlements. According to our zoning, this project needs a conditional use permit, a design review, and approval of a vesting tentative tract map. Thank you. Next. In evaluating the conditional use permit, we feel that it meets all the criteria, subject, again, to the mitigation and design modification that we referred to. The criteria looks at, does this conform with the general plan? Yes. Does it meet all the setbacks? Yes. Does a public street, can it handle the capacity? Yes. Then we come to the last one, where we talk about, we would like to see some mitigation and redesign for the easterly structure. Next, please. When we're looking at design review, it's much more looking at all the different components. We've done this in detail in the staff report. The first one looks at, how well is the project designed for the people who will be onsite? The next one looks at, what's the relationship to the physical features? In this case, you could say, how does it work on the sloped property with the topography? We look at consistency of architectural style. In our review, it's a fairly neutral style. I think it's a very appropriate style, and everything within the project matches. Again, we're with balance and integration with the neighborhood. Once again, this is our theme, that we think that there is some redesign that could help. We also look- We also look at the signs and landscaping, and hardscaping. We really do take a hard look at a lot of things, and we feel that the proposed signs and landscaping are handsome, they're appropriate, and they're in keeping with the proposed project. The landscaping has to meet, by the way, the state water conservation law. Go on. Well, here's the recommendation. We recommend that the planning commission open the public hearing, initiate discussion on project design, and if deemed appropriate, direct staff to prepare the necessary resolutions. We've also noted at the bottom that the planning commission may wish to continue the hearing in order to give the applicant some time to come back with a revised project. Thank you.
Just a little bit, thank you, Nina. Any questions to staff?
Now, Mr. Chairman, we now have the applicant's presentation?
Yes, but, I mean, do we have anything? Well, okay, well, will the applicant come forward, please?
Good evening, staff and the community in public. My name is Heather Lee, and I represent Legato Companies. Since the planning staff has gone over the facts about the project, I am here to share about the outreach that was made to the community, the concerns about this project from our neighbors, and to address some of those concerns. And Stacy, I'll just say, next slide. I can just do next slide?
Okay.
First, we realize that change is always asking people to step out of their comfort zone. A time of change can be very exciting for some, but at the same time, it's asking people to step into what feels like the unknown, and this can be a very frightening experience. Our site at 1700 Pacific Coast Highway has a history. It's the home of the Palace Verdi's Inn, sometimes referred to as the Plush Horse Inn, which has been there for over fifty years. Its iconic sign creating a strong presence along Pacific Coast Highway. At the corner of the site, there is a building that was once the Plush Horse Restaurant, which later became a discotheque, French restaurant, the Strand nightclub, and eventually the Bristol Farms Grocery Store. A strip of retail exists between this building and the hotel, wherein the remaining part of the site is primarily drive aisles and downgrade parking lot. The project that we are proposing is quite comparable to what currently exists at the site. The hotel will remain and be renovated. The new project includes a grocery store, which is eighteen hundred square feet larger than the old grocery store. The current site has approximately seventy-two hundred square feet of retail, and the new project proposes sixteen hundred square feet less. The only real difference is that the new project includes seventy-six hundred square feet of restaurant, one hundred and eighty apartment units, and a large public plaza and public open space. The intention of the project is to enhance Redondo Beach. Our intention is to take this de-energized piece of property and bring it back to life. The project is very similar to what has been there in the past.
Can I interrupt you for just a second? I think it'd be very nice if everybody, I understand this is very, very sensitive, but let's, you know, let's let Heather speak. Everybody's going to get a chance to speak, and I think everybody wants that same type of courtesy when they're up here.
Thank you. The project is very similar to what has been there in the past, only it will be better for a number of reasons. This project is going to bring much-needed rental stock to the city. It is going to add infrastructure to the area that it desperately needs. These infrastructure upgrades include the widening of Pacific Coast Highway to accommodate vehicles and bicycles, and upgrades to the sewer lines, which are in critical need of repair. This project is going to renovate the hotel, creating more revenue for the city while maintaining its architectural design. A vibrant new project will create the walkability and the pedestrian-friendly environment that this area needs. Located across from the Riviera Village, residents and visitors will be able to walk to shops, cafes, and other amenities. The lifestyle is that of walking and riding bicycles in the area. With a grocery store downstairs and all of the amenities in the Riviera Village, people will be able to leave their cars behind and enjoy the area. Further, the project includes a large component of public open space. This invites the public to use the retail and to work and visit on the property. The mixed-use concept creates synergy among the uses and lifestyle that people want to live. So although we are presenting what can feel like a large mixed-use project, we are building the infrastructure to support it and creating a layout that will enhance and maintain the charm of Redondo Beach. During our outreach, the most prevalent concern for the community was traffic. This is always a hot issue everywhere. We understand that traffic at the Pacific Coast Highway and Palace Verdi's Boulevard intersection is already running at a sub-efficient level of service. I can understand how people living in the area are affected by this and would be fearful of more trips being added to the area. However, this is a misconception. The project is not just mitigating the traffic trips being created by the project, but mitigating the traffic that is already there. In discussions with Caltrans and the city, a significant number of changes are being added to the intersection. They include the full widening of Pacific Coast Highway, the addition of lanes, and widening of lanes. These alterations will cost in excess of a million and a half dollars, and the infrastructure upgrades would not occur but for this project. This first slide shows these improvements. Although through lanes are going both north and south on Pacific Coast Highway, there is going to be an additional through lane added to both directions. I also have a board available for the public to look at on easels down here. The second slide, Stacy, specifically identifies that the intersection is running at an E-level of service in the evening. With the project and the mitigation, the level of service in the evening will be upgraded to a D-level of service. That's an incredibly significant benefit, which is exactly what the community is saying that they want. So understandably, it sounds to people like traffic could be worse, but in fact, the upgrades to the intersection will generate better traffic flow with a higher level of service than even currently exists. So the traffic experience out there right now, with a major arterial highway that the community doesn't believe is good enough to support the traffic right now, is going to be replaced with something much, much better. The second most prevalent concern with the project was parking. Even though the parking for the project exceeds the estimated residential peak parking demand, there is still a high degree of concern. There are few myths about parking that should be cleared up. One myth about parking is that the project requires additional employee parking. In fact, the commercial parking rates have already included employee parking into that rate. No additional employee parking is required. That is to say, employee parking is already accounted for and therefore does not constitute any additional burden to the project. Another myth is that there will not be enough parking for the residential guests in the evening. It's important to remember that the commercial will be closed each night, and that after it closes, that the commercial parking field will be available to overnight guests of the residential section. If any other parking misconceptions arise during the public comment period, I'll be more than happy to address them. The third community concern is density. Stacy, here is a slide of an aerial image of the project laid into the site. It doesn't overwhelm the site and is very similar to the other buildings on Pacific Coast Highway. The community stated many times that they felt the project was too dense. To help address this issue, I had a density map prepared. The slide shows the other projects with similar density located adjacent to the project. Next slide, Stacy. We are located in a commercial corridor. Behind us, the density of the complexes range from forty-five to sixty-six dwelling units per acre, and in relationship, our project is coming in at fifty-four point nine dwelling units per acre and therefore is not overly dense compared to what already exists in the surrounding area. The project is appropriate for the land use designation. I can understand how numbers can seem large and that it is difficult for people to understand how large this property actually is, and to understand that in relationship to everything else, the project is not pushing any limits of density. In particular, the community feels that Legato is taking what the full extent of the law will allow in density. In fact, this is incorrect. Legato could have applied for two hundred one apartment units on the site under the state density bonus law, taking another concession and adding more low-income housing. After laying out the concepts with an intention to have the appropriate-sized project to accommodate all of the needs of the commercial, the residential, and the public, the project was submitted at a hundred and eighty units. The project has more density but is creating low-income housing as well. Both the state and the city of Redondo Beach have made it clear through their zoning designation and the law that this is a goal of theirs that they want to achieve. The fourth community concern is views and height. To help demonstrate this, I have a couple of slides of the building. Stacy, next slide. Here is a simulation of the view of the property right behind the Sunset Riviera condominiums. This is the second building in from Palace Verdi's Boulevard. I left off the building at Palace Verdi's Boulevard because, in fact, you can't see the project from the first building in at all. So this is the second building in behind the project. You can see that only a portion of the corner of the building is visible. The building is significantly set back from the neighbors, approximately fifty feet. Next slide, please. This next slide shows what it will look like from the third building in from Palace Verdi's Boulevard. Next slide, Stacy. And next, I have a slide of a height plane study, which shows that the request to increase height is minimal. The project fluctuates in height around the entire perimeter of the project. There are areas of the project perimeter which are twenty-one feet high, thirty-seven feet high, forty-seven feet high, and the highest point is actually here at the front of the project, the first wing of residential coming out. It just hits fifty-three feet high there. So the project was deliberately set up so that the housing would be set back from the pedestrian experience and to allow for public interaction at the corner. The portion of the white building shown above is actually above forty-two feet, above the forty-two-foot height, yellow plane, showing the additional height we are requesting as a concession for this project. And as you can see, it ranges at different points between five feet and eleven feet, and in some places, a lot less. The height is necessary because this project is situated on a slope in both directions. As you can see, the concession height is minimal over what the community believes is allowable. Next slide, Stacy. So this is the second picture of the height plane from the back of the project. This project is not exceeding what the public believes is allowed in height in a dramatic way, nor does it appreciably affect views. Much of the presentation tonight was a result of the outreach made through community meetings and over three thousand three hundred comment cards made to households. We intend to continue dialogue throughout this process. We're looking forward to a vibrant project that has incredible public open space and Wi-Fi for people to enjoy. We believe the development will activate this intersection, increase walkability, and serve the lifestyles of the Redondo Beach community. Thank you. And I'm available for questions now or after public comment, as you wish.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you can stay up just for a second if you have questions. Commissioner Sanchez.
Actually, I want to first start with a question to staff, if I may. If I recall, we, the housing element was recently updated, correct, within the last year? And so, as part of that housing element study, or that housing element update, was this project and the housing, the, was this development part of that housing element update?
This development was not part of it, but this area, in particular, the area of MU3A zoning from Palace Verdi's south to the city boundary, which is Zone MU3A, was included in the housing element to meet our state capacity for affordable housing sites. So the answer is, this project wasn't considered, because we don't consider projects in our general plan, but the site was identified as a targeted housing area for allowing affordable housing, as we are mandated to provide in our housing element.
Okay, thank you. If I may, Ms. Lee, you talked, when you first came up, you said something about, you wanted to tell us about your community outreach efforts, I believe. Could you explain a little bit more in detail than what you gave us? Because most of your presentation, in my opinion only, was about the value that you saw in your project. I want to know specifically about the outreach you did to the community on this project. And also, I know that you've done other projects within Southern California. If you'd spent some time telling us about your outreach on those projects and how that's comparable to what you did here on this project.
Okay. All of the items that I mentioned came from all of the meetings that we did have with the community, including all of the comments that came in on comment cards, as well as all of the community feedback to the city staff. So that's what I went over, but I attended two different meetings with Jeff Ginsburg's group for his district. Also, I attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting that went to the general public, that were training people in Redondo Beach about city government. I attended, both Weston and Henry, who have been assisting in the PR here. After we had all of our mailers come in, they attended many one-on-one meetings as requested by any of the public who wished to have private meetings to discuss the project.
How many were the, how many were there?
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, members of the planning commission. My name's Henry.
Hopefully, it's not morning.
It's not morning. Evening. Members of the planning commission, my name's Henry Rogers. Thank you for hearing me. I'm with Pair Strategies. We're a local public affairs firm that has been leading the Legato Community Relations Outreach here in Redondo Beach. As you can see, the city of Redondo Beach has a very active constituency, and we understand the importance of not only working with the city, but the community on this vital project. Included in your packet is an outreach memo detailing the community relations effort we have overtaken the last eight months on behalf of the project. Our efforts have included community meetings supplemented.
Hold on, where was?
Yeah, where is this memo?
The one I sent on the ninth.
It's not in there.
It's not in their packet.
Okay.
Well, I have a copy of it where I can submit it if it's appropriate.
Motion to receive and file, but it's kind of hard to, you know, weigh in on something at this late a date, but you're more than welcome to receive and file.
Not a problem.
So motion to receive and file.
Second.
Okay.
There are no objections, so order.
Thank you. Our efforts have included community meetings supplemented by Councilmember Ginsburg's monthly meeting, state co-governor group meetings, and individual one-on-one meetings.
Can you tell me, though, specifically about the community outreach meetings, aside from Councilman Ginsburg's meetings?
Of course. Yeah, I will, I have a prepared statement.
Can we get there a little faster, because I have a number of questions for, I mean, I don't want to cut you off, but if we could get there a little bit sooner.
Of course. For example, we did an every-door direct mail campaign to thirty...
Hold on, hold on. As, please, as the chair said, everybody has an opportunity. This is the applicant's time.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. We did an every-door direct mail campaign, an EDDM campaign, to thirty-three hundred households. Included in that every-door direct mail campaign was a tear-away comment card with prepaid postage, requesting feedback from the community. Of the thirty-three hundred we sent out, we only received thirty-seven responses. And from that, we had four, we had four one-on-one meetings. That was about a response rate of 1.12%. We, in addition to the outreach we've done with the comment cards, we also set up a Facebook account, allowing for interaction with the community with members who didn't receive the comment card or chose not to return it, and we've received numerous feedback. We've been able to schedule meetings through that medium, and we recently engaged with a local homeowners association who we've been in dialogue with.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, the outreach will be this EDDM mailer that you did?
Correct.
There was a, an outreach from the Hollywood Riviera Homeowners Association to you that they initiated?
Correct.
Not you guys, correct? There was a updated meeting for the Redondo Beach Chamber of Commerce, correct, which you, somebody attended?
I want to clarify. On the every-door direct mail, it's set up by postal route.
Hold on.
Can you state your name?
My name is Weston Labar. I'm a partner with Pair Strategies. And I just wanted to clarify, on the every-door direct mail, it's based on postal route. So every single mailbox within a certain postal route gets a piece of mail. From that, apparently several people in the Hollywood Riviera Homeowners Association did receive it and some didn't. They must have a different post service. I don't know. However, from that, there created some feedback from the president of the Homos Association that they would like to meet with us, and that's what spurred the meeting. So the mailer, several people apparently in the Homos Association did receive, and there's a map in the outreach, which unfortunately, I'm sorry you didn't get to see, but there's a map that shows what those postal routes are.
But, back to my, and I thank you for clarifying, but the items we talked about was this mailer, the out- talked about was this mailer, the outreach from the homeowners, the Riviera, Hollywood Rivera Homeowners Association. The Redondo Beach Chamber of Commerce meeting? And as well as two meetings held by Councilmember Ginsburg, which were his regular monthly community outreach meetings? But they were not supposed, tell me about the outreach.
Okay, so-
Tell me about the outreach that you did, that you guys initiated for public meeting, public comments, out, meetings, face-to-face meetings, similar to might would have been with Councilman Ginsburg, but were not done during Councilman Ginsburg's time?
Can I just say, though, that the ones that came to Councilman Ginsburg's meeting were because I sent out mailers, but to all of the-
Please, yes.
People behind the, behind the project, I sent out invitations to all of the condominium owners behind the project.
Sure.
And that's why they came to the meeting. A lot of them knew that I was presenting and specifically came to see the presentation.
And that's fantastic, but I'm curious about what other outreach did you do, two of that nature, beyond Councilman Ginsburg's meetings?
Yeah, and we also reached out to the, the Riviera Village Business Improvement District, and we, we hosted a meeting with them at Hennessy's with the board of directors there to go over the project, and attended a follow-up meeting where they voted to support this project as well.
And were there residents at that? Did you inform residents affecting your, did you inform residents affecting this property that, hey, they were invited to this, uh, this meeting?
The Business Improv, the Business Improvement District had decided to keep it to their members, which were the businesses there, and that was their decision, not ours.
Okay, so, again, back to my original question. What outreach did you guys do beyond Councilman Ginsburg's monthly meetings of a similar nature?
Well, with all due respect to the thirty-three hundred mailers that went out?
I'm not asking about the mailers. I'm asking about the face-to-face-
Yes.
-public meetings that you, where we have people come in and say, hey, we're having a meeting, and we want you to come down and see our project and comment. As, as a number of people who've developed in Redondo Beach, we've directed them to go do that sort of thing, and they've come back later date providing. So I'm asking you, what sort of outreach did you do of that nature for this project?
And, and I'm trying to answer, what we did, the reason we went with the every-door direct mail and to set up one-on-one meetings and comment cards is because the meetings we had with Councilman Dis, uh, Councilman Ginsburg were very unproductive in our, in our man, in our, um, in our opinion.
And I appreciate that. I'm just asking, what other things did you do to have those sort of direct face-to-face meetings? And a mailer is not a face-to-face meeting. Going to Councilman Ginsburg meeting and taking up part of his time is not really sort of, you know, Councilman Ginsburg has other items that he wants to share with his constituents, and the constituents want to share with him. So I'm asking, beyond those things, what did you do to reach out to the community of that nature, face-to-face, come down, see our projects, ask us, we're going to put up all our poster boards, you're going to see what we have planned? What meetings of that nature took place?
So, like I said, the one meeting was actually at Councilman Ginsburg's request to host with him, so we had a full meeting at his request to host with him. That was the first meeting we did. We felt it was very unproductive in trying to convey the project because every time we tried to answer questions, it was unable, we were unable to do it. There was a hostile crowd. We felt the best way to answer the, we felt the best way to-
Hold on, hold on, it's the applicant's time. It's the applicant's time. It's the applicant's time.
We felt the best way to answer their questions was to try to do it one-on-one as we had many people reach out to us and say they did not feel comfortable addressing it, and they had actual questions and concerns that they didn't feel like voicing in a large group. So we felt the best way to get in touch with people and answer their questions and concerns was to do so one-on-one and to set up small group meetings through the mail piece. That's why we went that route.
Okay. So, so, but-
And just so you know, Councilman Ginsburg has a email that he sends out to all of his constituents that informs them that we will be speaking about this project. And we did take up all of his time, and, and the next, the second time, he tried to limit it to a certain amount of time, but the first time, I must, we had quite a long time.
Okay, but, but was, what if Councilman Ginsburg hadn't invited you guys? What, what sort of plan?
I was told that was our primary route to do outreach. I was told to contact Councilman Ginsburg and to set it up through him. So since he, and, and had, we had discussed that, and that was the major route of doing it, that's why I followed his direction.
Okay, so you, you believe that the only way to reach the community was through Councilman Ginsburg? Is that fair?
I know, I went to Chamber of Commerce events, and I also, we went to the PV Village, so we were doing outreach to the neighbors, other, other areas besides just Councilman Ginsburg.
Okay, so, with that, then, tell me, because I know you guys have developed other projects in Southern California, tell me about how you did outreach on those projects? And what sort of responses, what sort of interactions did you have with the communities regarding those projects?
I believe I, in Culver City, I had several, um, two small meetings with the local people before the planning commission hearing. I had two there, and then in, um-
Were they initiated by you guys, or was it part of?
Unlike, unlike the city of Redondo Beach, that actually doesn't have anything in their code about public outreach, some of the other cities actually have things in their codes about how they want those things set up. So there is no real guidance in Redondo Beach as compared to other cities. In other cities, they specifically tell you where you're supposed to be and how you're supposed to approach that and where these things normally take place. So, in Redondo Beach, there's nothing in the code that discusses it at all.
Did you inquire with staff whether, what options, if there was no clear guidelines, did you go to staff and say, hey, what, what do you recommend is the best way to reach people?
Well, we had submitted all of this information to staff about approaching the community, and I didn't hear that there were other methods besides those that we were employing from staff.
Okay, hold on one second. So, um, somebody, Aaron, staff, Anita?
We have consistently asked that the applicant maximize their public outreach, get together with the neighborhood. We had some information that they had done some one-on-one meetings, they had attended the meetings shown in this memo. But as with all applications, especially a project of this scope, we strongly encourage them to do more.
All right, thank you. So please continue to tell me about, or tell us about the outreach. You, you mentioned Culver City.
I'm complete with the outreach, but, you know, as Aaron said, he, he encouraged us to do maximum outreach, but again, there were no specifics as to where, with whom, or what specifically, because the city doesn't have anything designated for that.
Did you feel like your hands were tied, then, without having?
No, I felt that we were doing the public outreach that we had been told to do and correct.
Okay, so, so you felt you did the most you could?
We felt we were complete.
Okay. That's all for right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, um, this takes a turn, actually. This is to staff. You were talking about the density bonus, how it's, uh, for thirty years? But on page one of the California Legislative Information, the government code, it actually says fifty-five years. Can you clarify the difference, discrepancy in this? And in the Cali, the California Government Code, it says bonus for fifty-five years or a longer period of time if required by the Construction or Mortgage Financing Assistance Program.
Well, we can definitely take a closer look at that. The, the state legislative requirements will trump the city's local requirements if they require a greater period of time. I believe the thirty years is referenced perhaps in the city's municipal code, but if the density bonus law requires more, which we'll take a closer look at, then that's what will be complied with.
And actually, on the, throughout the, throughout the project, it states that north and south would coincide with the direction of PCH, and east-west would coincide with PV Boulevard, yet throughout, it's, um, it's fraught with discrepancies. On page five of the application, it says that the site is bounded by, on PCH on the west and PV on the south.
The applicant's application?
Yeah. Wouldn't that be the north?
Yeah, again, as I mentioned, because of the orientation, which is that it's not, doesn't line up with the cardinal compass points, um, a lot of people, you know, will say, "South PCH," and then someone else will go, "No, no, it's East PCH." And that's why regardless of what the applicant put down, once we started analyzing the project, we as staff and with our consultants said, "Let's agree to refer to PCH as South-North and PV East-West," just because it's a lot easier than saying Northwest, East, Southeast, and that type of thing. So, when they completed their applications, that was not something we had yet discussed with them.
Okay, and then there was a, a question here. You were saying that Redondo Beach needs one thousand three hundred ninety-seven new homes to satisfy the housing element. Do the extra-low-income units, do they better satisfy that? How are we doing on extra-low income?
I should mention, that, that RENA number that's provided in the city's housing element is given to us through delegation from state, state down to our local county, down to local cities, through the RENA process. It is not a obligation to construct thirteen-hundred-plus units. That's an obligation to provide the zoning to construct that many units. It's a big distinction between that.
Okay. And then, the parking bonus that's requested, why doesn't that count as one of their two concessions?
The way the government code is structured, it, if you get to that section, I'll just go there right now. It says that upon the request of the developer, no city-county shall require, we cannot require a vehicle parking ratio that exceeds the following. It, it dictates it. And it has nothing to do with the waiver of development standards, it has nothing to do with a concession. It's like, and, you're not allowed to ask more than one parking space for studios and one parking space for one bedroom. It's a separate requirement.
Okay. No more questions right now.
Commissioner, Adam?
I guess I, I have a problem even looking at this realistically without knowing what you're going to do with the hotel. It's this giant structure that takes up, and, and the reason being was that, I sure hope for your sakes, when you're done with the hotel, it, it isn't like it is now. But if it's a boutique hotel, the impact on traffic, noise, and everything else in this project is, is not reflected in any of these reports. It just isn't, because the, the newer boutique hotels have become destination places for drink, for food, for entertainment.
The current hotels-
So I, so I think, without us knowing, other than this broad-term renovate, what, what are your plans for this hotel? Is it going to be, I've, I've heard, wherever, that it's going to be a boutique hotel with a large rooftop gar, uh, deck, you know, with entertainment up there, and, well, I'm just telling, if that's the case-
Those are rumors.
Well, I, I don't know what they are. But what I'm saying is that you haven't told me anything different.
I'd love to tell you something about that.
But the fact of the matter is, if, if the makeup of the hotel, the, the, the operation of the hotel is more of a destination entertainment facility than a hotel, then that's going to have a meaningful impact on the traffic, noise, and everything else. I assume now is not, not the time to talk about traffic mitigation and such?
Let's just, we, we've got a lot of folks here that want to speak, so we'll try to-
Well, well, are we going to get an opportunity to talk about traffic mitigation?
Well, 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 go ahead, yeah, I mean, let's-
Well, I, I think the thing about the traffic mitigation is, I guess you could understand all this and believe it if you didn't live in the area. But if you live there, that's just not the case. Unfortunately, it's not the case. One thing that's missing is the daily dodging of people running across the highway from the school, but into the convenience mark. But the fact of the matter is, w- we talk about mitigation, yet we don't have a very good track record of mitigation. And one of the goodest examples is the CVS store at PCH and Torrance Boulevard. I believe CVS put up a sixty-five-thousand-dollar deposit to meet the criteria of the traffic mitigation, yet here it is six or seven years later, and none of the traffic mitigation has been done. I notice in a Caltrans letter in here, they say that all traffic mitigation, whatever it is, has to be completed before you can even start your project. Yet I understand the staff report says all traffic mitigation must be completed before you get an occupancy permit. Totally different than start and occupancy permit. And the third thing about traffic mitigation that I'm concerned about is at the end of one of the reports, in the very last paragraph, said, "P.S., please be advised, the city in Torrance does not intend to participate in any traffic mitigation on this intersection now or in the future." So-
Well, I'd love to respond to some of those before, so I don't miss them all. One of them is that a sixty-five-thousand-dollar bond that CVS posts is not the same as one point five million dollars' worth of infrastruc, major infrastructure overhaul.
It doesn't matter to me if it's six dollars or six million dollars.
Well, it doesn't matter to us whether or not-
We're either going to mitigate, excuse me, we, my point is, we're either going to take real mitigation procedures and complete them, or we're not. And in the case of CVS, forget about the sixty-five thousand versus your million and a half.
Sure.
They paid their money because they were told, because it was going to be mitigated, and it has never been mitigated.
But that is a bond, or whatever they posted with the city, versus we actually are doing and hiring the people that are going into the road and going to pull back our property by seven feet in order to allow and re-stripe all of these lanes. So it's not as if we're posting the money with the city and expecting the, the city to implement them. We actually will have people in the street making those mitigation changes.
I, I just have-
And Torrance is not in one of the, in, we don't, because we're doing, and as Anita said, we're paying and making all the infrastructure changes, that's why the city of Torrance doesn't need to participate, because we're actually doing it ourselves. We're not leaving it in the hands of the city to, to, to do that.
Well, you're not doing any mitigation on Torrance property, are you?
Well, we are in the sense that we're widening cat, the highway right there at PCH, and that's got Caltrans, it's, Caltrans property, state property, and it abuts both Torrance and Redondo Beach. So, in a sense, we're leaving their sidewalk alone, you know, we're not going to do anything there. We're taking all of that mitigation onto our property, and there's a dedication slide I think Anita did have in there, showing how we will be giving up our property and pulling the sidewalks back over seven feet in order to make room for twelve-foot sidewalks and additional lanes. So, that's what I was saying in my presentation, that I can understand how it doesn't feel like that on the ground. I, I totally get that, and I visited it tonight, but you only have one through lane in either direction. And this will give you two through lanes and dedicated right-hand turn lanes in longer and deeper, um, left-hand turn pockets, and I would refer the rest to Liz-
Two through lanes until you get through the intersection.
Well, Liz-
Then it's going to be one again.
The traffic engineer will be more than happy to explain more of the specifics of that if you'd like.
Well, I, I, I guess, if, if you take two lanes in front of, in front of the old Bristol Farms, the minute you get across the intersection, you're going right back to one lane because the traffic's backed up turning left on Avenue I, and, and that's so, so I don't know what we're accomplishing by taking one and making it two, and then making it one again.
The mitigation is, right now you have two lanes each direction, but the curb lane is a shared through right-turn lane. So what we're doing is we're taking away that shared lane, and we're making a dedicated through lane and a dedicated right-turn lane. So you're taking those volumes out of that through lane, both directions of PCH.
No, I, I hear you. I, I do understand that, and I, and I saw it in the picture. But what I'm saying is, the minute you go through past Palace Verdi's Boulevard, now we're taking two through lanes, and we're going to make them one lane again.
No, it, it is two lanes, continues on.
So what, what have you done, then what magic has happened on the left-hand turn lane onto Avenue I? Because that stops the traffic right up the highway.
Okay. So, you're southbound on PCH, right now. You're in the curb lane.
No, I'm talking northbound. Northbound.
Both ways. You can do it both ways.
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't work that way. Northbound.
Okay, you're going northbound. Okay? You're along the property on your side, right? You have two through lanes, but if you're in the curb lane and you want to turn right onto Palace Verdi's Boulevard, well, you can either go through or you can turn right, and there's also the bicycle lane that's going to be right up against you too, so you're encountering the bicycles. What the project's doing along the project front edge is pulling it back, widening there, and creating a dedicated right-turn lane just for vehicles and a lane for the bicycles.
Excuse me, we, I, I understand that. I, I clearly understand that. I've already crossed the intersection. I want you to cross with me.
Two lanes.
Cross, cross over P, PV Boulevard. Okay, so now we've taken two lanes, and we've put them across PV Boulevard, and the traffic is backing up to turn on Avenue I. So what are we going to do with those two lanes of traffic? Because there's only one lane.
Well, no, there's two lanes on the other side of Palace Verdi's Boulevard. And the thing, the change is that the far-right lane that used to be going through and to the right now is two lanes. So the right, the turns that are going right are going to be turning right. The two through lanes are still going through.
Okay, that's, that's southbound where you're pointing.
Both directions, it happens in both directions. We're widening, we're creating a right- We're widening, we're creating a right turn lane-
So you're widening, you're widening PCH in front of Fat Burger and Burger Back Go and all that?
No, where it's orange, on both, on either side of Pacific Coast Highway, so if you're traveling northbound, it's the orange lane on the right, or if you're traveling southbound, it's the orange lane there. Those are new right-hand turn lanes. Before, the one yellow inset from each used to make a right or a left, or, or, or a right or go straight. So in the past, if you were in that through lane, and someone decides they're gonna, and someone wants to make a right out of that lane, but somebody's crossing the street there, they have to stop. So anyone who wanted to go through can't go through anymore, cause that person has to stop and wait for that pedestrian to pass, so they can turn right. Now they don't have to do that anymore. People in that lane can go straight through, and everyone wanting to make a right will be in another new lane on the right.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna stop, because I'm, I'm still going the opposite direction than either of you are.[655.41][655.41](APPLAUSE)
Perhaps-
You're still heading the other way, so we'll, we'll try again later tonight.
Sure, alright. And there was a question, I think you had before, about the hotel.
Yeah.
We don't have a restaurant in the hotel, and as a matter of fact, that restaurant space is being taken out, and it's not, there is no restaurant space. So there won't be any drinking and restaurant in there at all. There's also no plans for a roof deck at all, or any of that. We still have 110 rooms, the parking spaces to accommodate those rooms, and, and the renovation is primarily going to be to the sewer inside, and all of the MEP, mechanical, electrical, plumbing on the inside. There may be, you know, revision to the decor of the hotel.
Could, is that something to change depending on what operator you get?
It's gonna maintain its architectural design. Well, we have an operator in there now, and there could be another operator that decides it doesn't want blue interiors and it wants, you know, new green interiors, I don't know.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, I wanna go touch back on some things that build off of where Commissioner Rodriguez was with regards to housing. So, I have a question. How often, in some of your other projects, do you incorporate low-income housing or affordable housing into your developments? Is that a pretty common practice for what you do?
In mixed-use housing today, it's common practice.
And, and so that's something that you, you guys, I just wanna be clear, that is a practice that Legato undertakes. You favor doing, was it, affordable housing as part of your mixed-use projects?
Correct.
What's the motivation? What's your primary motivation for wanting to provide that sort of housing?
You know-
Hold on, it's the applicant's time, please.
I would say that I'd have to defer that question to speaking with the people in our office that would like to make a statement about that. So at this time, as the representative here at this hearing, I'm unable to answer that.
Okay, well, that's certainly a question I would really appreciate having answered at some point.
We can get you an answer to that.
So, on another item for everyone, if, anybody else can look at their cellphone right now, and, we've had three phones ring, just take a second to turn your ringers off, if you don't mind. Unless you want it. Here's a waiting somebody else's phone now.
So, with regards to the, some of the residential housing that's there, and, who do you guys envision is the demographic that's gonna occupy those properties?
I think people who want to live in apartment housing in Redondo Beach, who can't afford to perhaps buy a home at this time, or people who wanna downsize from homes that wanna live in apartments.
Do you have an idea of what the-
Young people who'd like to live a more walkable lifestyle and bike-oriented lifestyle, it is close to the ocean, you can ride your bike there and enjoy the amenities. Mixed use is very popular all over the country at this point. People wanna get out of their cars.
Okay, do you have an idea of what sort of income requirements that, like, who's the demographic? I understand, those are all the nice things, but, but these, living at the beach in Redondo Beach comes with a price tag, and, and, and I'm curious, what, what, who do you guys envision is gonna occupy the non-affordable income, or non-low income, or was it affordable income, affordable housing? Who's gonna, who do you guys envision occupying the non-affordable housing properties?
I suspect the same people who are renting from all the other apartments in the area, they would probably come by our project as well, and want to apply and see if they want, chose that, selected that building over another apartment building in the area.
So, fair to say, I believe, that many of the folks in that part of town are high-income earners, dare I say, dual-income earners, potentially, I don't know. This is my guess, so please take everything I say with a grain of salt. But I'm just envisioning that, if you have double-income people, and if they're young people, and they wanna live at the beach because that's what we all want, and all the best they can afford is a one-bedroom or a studio, my guess is that they have two cars. And how do we, how is that being addressed? Or, I mean, I'm just curious, what the vision is, from Legato's standpoint, for something of that nature? Have you guys thought about that as a possibility? That you might have two incomes, two cars, in a, in a resident that's only designated one parking spot?
Well, we have additional guest parking in the project as well, shared parking with the retail. There's, there's, the project is parked at 614 spaces, and there's only 180 units and carriages, so-
So are we counting on the non-assignable parking to, to-
There is guest parking in the mezzanine, correct, so if you're, if you're having people come over, well, at this point, you know, that would be speculation for me to say how many people will live in a one-bedroom. A studio is rarely lived in by more than one occupant.
Well, I, I-
You're sharing your opinion, I'm just sharing what our experience is as developers-
Right, but I, but I'm, you're asking, you're asking us up here to make a decision way of finding, and I just wanna be clear on, I wanna be clear on what it is you're asking us to do. Because I have to walk out of here, I'm, you know, we're, we're officials of the city, and we have to do right by the community, and I wanna make sure that we're doing right by the community, but, by the same token, no, it's not but, and, we also need to make sure that we help you. But, the primary, you know, the residents of Redondo Beach, I wanna do right by them,
Good evening, Commissioner Sanchez and Chair Commissioner Vero, my name is Fernando Villa, and I'm, I'd like to address some of the points you raised, if I may please, Commissioner Sanchez, concerning parking and mitigation. The, the parking that is reflected in the standards that are included in the conditions of approval, meet or exceed the national standards for parking demand for residential uses of the strip, whether it's studios, one bedrooms, or, and two bedrooms. The basis for those standards are exhaustive studies that are done nationally, that take into account the possibility that you may have two people in a, in a one-bedroom unit, or one person in a two-bedroom unit, and the parking demand, so those, the standards that are reflected, that we meet or exceed, in fact, take into account various different demographic scenarios, and their averages or medians, they're very well documented. And so those standards we meet, can we today predict the demography, the number of residents who will live in these units? Of course not, no one can. But what we can say, is that the standards that we have in there take into account those types of contingencies, and we can say, that during the evening hours and early morning hours, and on weekends, when residents are most likely to be at their homes, we will have surplus parking because the commercial uses will not be open during those times. So, we, and we, in consultation with the planning staff, who've been very helpful in guiding us through this process, we understand that we have enough parking that meets those standards. And I, if I may, to Commissioner respond to, I think, a point that Commissioner Guyan raised, which is a very good point, on mitigation, the concern about ensuring that mitigation in fact will take place as this project proceeds, one of the conditions that are, that for the traffic improvements that's in the MND, states that the improvements that are required have to be fully funded by the applicant and implemented, i.e. built, before the city will issue its final inspection, and before the city will allow the opening of the project. You have complete control over this process. We cannot open, we cannot do anything with this property unless and until those improvements are inspected and approved by the city and by Caltrans, to the extent it has that jurisdiction. In addition, the city also saw fit in its MND, it's not ours, it's the city's that prepared it with their, with their consultant. The applicant must deposit the funds, the $1.5 million funds, the funds required for those improvements with this, the city of Redondo Beach, within two months of approval of the conditional use permit, if in fact that that happens. That has to happen at the very front of the process, long before any construction begins. So you have built into the process a requirement that we must meet before we can build, before we can open.
So, to follow up with you, you said that you cannot predict, you know, it's speculation as to who's gonna live there, or who you're gonna attract, but I have to believe, you're not just building this and hoping, you're building this, hopefully, I would think as business people, smart, wise investors of real estate, that you're building this to attract a certain demographic, or a certain, certain types of income earners, or you, you're, you're just not building this and just throwing it up to the wind. You, everybody builds for a purpose. Is that a fair assessment, fair statement?
What I think is a fair response to your question, Commissioner Sanchez, now it's my turn to guess and assume. My assumption and belief is that every landlord, every developer of residential property wants to have, as tenants, people who can pay their rent, people who have the ability to pay rents, that's just simply common sense, it's common business sense. I expect and assume that Legato has that same motivation. It wants to attract tenants that will pay their rent, that have the ability to pay their rent. Clearly, Redondo Beach is a very attractive community, and that's why Legato is investing in this community, and clearly want to attract tenants that will make full use of not only the amenities that this, and make this an attractive facility, attractive center, that will draw what we, what all of us would consider desirable tenants. Tenants that can afford to live there, tenants that will spend money in the local community, tenants that will make use of the, of the public and open space amenities, people that will use their bicycles as this facility is designed to encourage. So, those are my beliefs and assumptions, and I think that's something that not only the owner would want, but the community would want as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hong.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to kinda tag on Commissioner Sanchez's comments regarding parking, and just the size, and, and, you know, I'm just kinda looking at some of the, the state codes, and how, how an assessment needs to be made in terms of whether such concessions or incentives are needed, and I was wondering if there were any considerations made to, given the code, at least the city code, of a maximum of 149, whether the business case was considered at 149, including, you know, you know, I think it's great that, that you want to provide opportunities for, for affordable housing, but the business case for 149 units in accordance with the codes. The reason why I was thinking of that is, looking at the number of units that consist on a fourth floor, it looks like there's 27, so, if, if you were to lop off the fourth floor, you'd still have capacity for 153 units, which is well within the 149. The other thing was, if I look at 149, looking at two cars, or two spaces per 149, it looks like the, the number of spaces that you propose would fit within those guidelines at 149. It doesn't with 180, which is why you need the waiver. And also, you know, whether, you know, if, if you could lop off that fourth floor, whether you would fit within the height limitations that are provided with, you know, by the city guidelines. I just wanted to know, what considerations were made to fit within the guidelines that, that the city already has in place?
Well, I know that we looked at those different variations of the project, and that this one is the one that, that the powers that be finalized on financially. So, taking consideration the number of units and the concessions, this was the one that made the, the most sense.
Most, most, right, most money, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm just saying, because, I'm just wondering, when we look at the concessions, whether it's required, it's desired, you know, everyone wants to make more money. I'm just looking at the difference between whether it's required, or whether it's desired.
Commissioner Fernando Villa again, I, I would like to take a, make an effort to respond to your question, and, the way, this really goes back to what both the state of California and your own city have done. Both the city of Redondo Beach and the state have made it a policy decision to encourage the development of affordable housing. Your, your code has some wonderful language about, and particularly this property, is designated to promote and encourage affordable housing development. And the state law that we've all been talking about, the density bonus law, by operation of that law, is incorporated into every city's ordinance. So, it's, it's like the uniform building code, right? It's incorporated into every city that doesn't adopt its own code. And I bring that up for a very important reason. California long ago recognized that the way, and especially by the way, that we no longer have community redevelopment law, which was a mechanism designed to develop affordable housing, using tax increment financing, that public means of financing affordable housing is gone. The only means by which today, at least in, under state law, and local law, that that kind of housing can be encouraged, is to turn to private industry and say, "We will give you an incentive to develop, because we know that density is important, as a part of your business consideration, to, to make a decision whether or not to base, we know that density is important to you. So here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna offer you the carrot of giving you density, if you in turn give that community, provide affordable housing." You heard some numbers today talked about how affordable housing and inventory stock are lacking in Redondo Beach. You're not unique, every city along the coast, and much, and most of the 88 cities in Los Angeles County are woefully behind, they're, they're, not only their affordable, I'm sorry, not only their inventory stock, especially multifamily, but especially in affordable housing. So what the state legislators, and frankly, your predecessors, I'm sorry, the city council members, adopted measures to try to incentivize private development. So, when we talk about what business considerations Legato did, and I, you know, I don't know, because I haven't consulted with my client about what in fact they looked, and how, how their pro forma's penciled, but I do know that, because I've done a lot of this type of housing all over California, that developers will do this, and will be incentivized to provide affordable housing in exactly the way our capitalist society is designed to do. You adopt a law that provides a measure of incentive that makes it attractive, and that, this law that we're talking about gives that developer that right. So really, that's what it comes down to. We're trying, clearly, Legato is taking advantage of this law, and clearly, a major motivation for developing affordable housing is because it is incentivized to provide greater density, and we're trying to do it in a way that makes sense for this community. We didn't take the full 200-plus, the full 200 units that we could have, given our set aside, our 6% set aside of units. Instead, we, we took 180, and that was a part of the give and take with the city, and we're fine with that. But that is what our motivation is, it's the law, it's what makes good business sense, and frankly, it's done all over California. Oh, I, I, I think I answered your question, yes.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Again, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, when they, you know, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but, you know, I'm, I'm reading the code, and it talks about whether it's required in order to provide the units, and, I know it's desired, but is it required? You know, you could, as far as I'm concerned, you could make all 149 affordable, it's probably not, it's, it's not, probably not gonna, you know, exceed any financial hurdles, but, you know, gosh, nine over 149, that's all, you know, that's 5%. If you increase your, the rent 5%, you know, and you give folks an extra parking space, I'm thinking, you know, you probably, you probably get people to, to pay that extra. So I'm just, I'm just trying to weigh whether, whether it really is, is, is required. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yeah, I wanted to touch on the parking standards that you were talking about, and he said that they use national standards. Do those take into-
Do those take into account that this is a beach community, and it's a more desirable location on the weekends, and that it's surrounded by permit parking, things like that? It's not like you can go in every direction to park. If you go west, you're, the parking is gonna get less and less.
This is Liz Calhanoglu in traffic. The standards are based on national standards, so these are surveys of multiple residential apartment projects, where they just go in there, they don't look at the number of bedrooms per unit, they don't look at what type of units they are, they don't look where the community is, and they just average them out as to what is the standard average for parking demand for the number of units in the building.
Okay, so with the community outreach that you did, parking was a big concern that they did, and I don't really see that much was done to mitigate that, or to satisfy that.
Well, the parking is already overparked as it is, and there's no parking overnight in the commercial area, except for for residents. So they can pick up over 149 units of extra spaces, or all in the commercial area, 75 more on the mezzanine level. The place is well parked.
Okay, we live here, we know it's not well parked.
I hear that. I'll be more than happy to take that concern.
And if it's quality of life, and you're gonna be running to these people, don't you think that you would want to have them where they're not scrambling for parking, or saying, "Well, I can't live there, there's no place to park"?
Well, in other buildings of similar, using the similar ratios, that's not been an issue for them, so, or for us in our other buildings, so...
Are these other buildings using the low income, where they have one parking space for one bedroom?
These are also mixed-use SB 1818 standards, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Guy?
Sorry, Commissioner Rodriguez, if I can just add a little bit to Heather's answer to your question, because you raise a very critical question that we labored hard with the city staff, and the city's own consultant is the one that did this independent study, and it was your consultant that said, "You're overparked." We looked at this very carefully, and we understand now. I may quarrel with her and say, you know, "We disagree with you, we think you're undercounting", but we did a lot of give and take on this. And by the way, I should add, we were able to be overparked even when we took advantage of this law that Commissioner Ung, you were focusing on, that says, "When you have your set asides, when you meet the state standards for affordability, this lower parking standard will apply." Even with that lower parking, and with the parking that Heather has designed in your building, after the consultant told us, the city's consultant, "This is more than enough parking," we're saying to ourselves, "Okay, I think we've crossed all our Ts and dotted all our Is, and I think we're going to be okay on parking."
And we've also included 60 additional guest parking spaces that aren't in part of that parking scenario under the state law. That's an additional 60 that actually goes to Redondo Beach's guest parking code section. So we did implement that, even though that wasn't required. So it's not as if it's just one parking space for a one-bedroom and two for a two-bedroom. There's additional guest parking.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Guy?
Regarding parking, one of the things that concerned me was, first of all, I was surprised when it was an apartment building, because traffic and parking around a condominium building, and around an apartment building, are night and day. They're two different things. And I know down on Catalina, if you go to an apartment building, you will find no parking spaces outside, I mean, outside of the building, externally available, ever. If you go to a condominium building, you'll find parking spaces. I didn't have the consultant come up with that, that was me walking the dog. But the fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is, is that here at the beach, parking is a premium. It's gonna be a premium at Redondo, Legato, it's gonna be a premium in the Village, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a premium every place. And so, when people are talking about parking, you're talking about a huge apartment building.
Well, those apartment buildings...
And I'm not, I'm not so much worried about how many people are gonna live in it, yet I don't think anyone has a clue how many's gonna live in it. But the fact of the matter is, people who live in an apartment, two blocks from the water, and across the street from Rock and Brew, have a lot of visitors. Okay? All the time. And I think, I think we have to think real world about what, where this location is, the dynamics of the Village, the dynamics of what's around it, and say, "Hey, you know, what works over here in Encino might not work on the corner of Palis Verdes Boulevard and that." And that's why there's a lot of concern about parking. And I think that for, and I just want to convey to you folks, that for a lot of us that live here, we have seen and lived this problem of this intersection for a long, long time. And then to read this report, I mean, it's truly like you're reading somebody who did something someplace else. It's like they don't, you know, where it is. And a lot of the experience is, it isn't just people being opposed to everything. Commissioner Ung's idea about lopping the fourth floor off there, I was gonna ask it later, but you know, I think in good faith, you could say, "Take it right off." That would be nice. Because this is part of the process, even though the law says, under the law, you can do all that, coming to the, coming to the planning commission and getting your project approved is part of the process, just like going to the planning department, or going anything else. I mean, there's just, I'm gonna summarize, it's just too big.
You know, and I echo a lot, echo a lot of what Commissioner Gann said, you know, I could feed my son ice cream for dinner every night, he'd probably be very happy, but it's probably not the right thing to do. So, you know, it's not that we don't want to see you be successful, but we want to see you be successful, and part of that is helping us help you in our community.
And on that note, on, from application to planning commission hearing, how much time did he, have you spent so far?
Approximately two years, I believe.
Okay, two years. And I think over the next couple hours, you're gonna get to see a lot more than 1.2% of the people that should have responded to the outreach. I think there's over 100 people here, which is, I think, you got 30-some responses. I think your outreach team should be writing down some names, and getting to know a lot of people, because I think everybody's here. So I think with that, I want to start, we're gonna transition to folks that want to speak in favor of the project, and I want...
Do you want to vote?
We can't, we gotta listen to everybody first. So, a couple things, everybody's phones off, we have...
Those are the people that want to speak?
These are the people that want to speak. Oh, we're gonna do, okay, we're just, we're gonna go in order, okay. So, everyone, we have a little traffic light-looking thing on the side, three minutes. State your name clearly, I think we're gonna be writing names down of everybody, I know the outreach team's gonna be writing everybody's names down, and you're concerned, so please state your name, write it on the sign-in sheet up there, keep an eye on the...
That was their sign-in.
Oh, never mind, I have, everybody's gonna speak, so. Everybody's signed in already. So, Amy, Amy Josephek. I have everybody's name for the applicant.
Hi, my name is Amy Josephek, and I live on Camino de las Colinas, which is very few feet from this proposed, I'm the city of Torrance, that's sort of in there. I am so grateful for laws that protect our right to free speech, but just because you have the right to say something, or eat ice cream, it doesn't mean it's always appropriate or proper. The problem with the proposed Legato plan, just because it may be legal, doesn't make it right or good. Have you seen the myriad comments on the web from inhabitants of Legato properties? With complaints about poor quality building materials, malfunctioning elevators, fire alarms that go off in the middle of the night for no reason? Did you read where they offer $50 gift cards if a Legato Encino resident posts a Yelp review? Or that they've cycled through three management companies in a two-year period? Do you know of the years already spent embroiled in their Playa del Rey project, for which, quote, "Parking and traffic concerns led planning committee to table Legato project"? And then for which the company was fined by the Department of Building and Safety for doing plumbing and construction work without permits? Will you really allow this company to proceed with this highly contested project? From the start, there are inadequate parking spaces for the number of residents, hotel guests, retail and restaurant customers, and employees. Have you thought about warm weather months, and what happens when 270-plus apartment renters invite friends and family to our lovely beach or on-premise pool? Where will those guests park? On our already overcrowded residential streets? Have you watched the video of the already congested traffic flow through PCH PV intersection to see how many light it takes, excuse me, to turn off of PCH, to see how long it takes now, before the addition of any retail or residences, to be able to exit the PV driveway? Improving turn lanes is something that needed to happen ages ago, for traffic that's been building for years. These remedies are long overdue, but by no means will be adequate to mitigate the onslaught of new traffic that will be added as a result of this too-dense block of new units. It's insulting to be told that the impacts of this plan will be insignificant or negligible, yet that's what we are repeatedly told, as if saying it enough times will make it so. It's insulting to have finally been offered a meeting with Legato just two weeks ago, for the very first time, only to have no actual Legato employees show up, but only their hired marketing and PR guns, who introduce themselves as, quote, "The outreach team." That is offensive, since there was virtually no community outreach, until Legato finally got wind of increasing community anger. Legato says in Tuesday's Daily Breeze, quote, "We have done extensive outreach," again, saying it even in print, even in your administrative report, or even with Heather Lee leading with this here tonight, doesn't make it true. Their website states a main principle, to always give back to the community, but even the little bit of green space of a dog park seems to already have been removed from the plans. Redondo made a commitment to livability, being the host to the Blue Zones project, but this looks like the antithesis of livability. The plan presented to you tonight is too dense, too tall, and just plain wrong for this parcel and neighborhood, unless you think all of the good people here speaking up are against developing this property. Am I done?
Time, yeah, can you, can keep an eye on the time, you've exceeded your time, is there, can you, can you wrap up your comment?
I'm just saying, we want to see this not lie fallow, but be developed, it just has to be, even though it's legal, it has to be the right, appropriate development for this piece of property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could suggest to the chair, you might want to read two names, or three, so people can...
Yeah, can we have Carol Perry stand by, too?
Good evening, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Just as Mr. Smith went to Washington seeking justice, I'm coming to you, members of the planning commission, to seek justice for our community. I was born and raised in this area, my mother still lives in the house that I grew up in, she's been in the house for 62 years on Camino de las Colinas, I live on Calle Miramar. If you accept Legato's proposal for this development, you will put our health, safety, welfare at risk. Buildings and developments endure for generations. I'm 64 years old, and the Palis Verdes Inn, originally the Plush Horse, was built before I was born. At least three generations have grown up with what is currently on that site. Whatever you decide today will impact generations to come, their safety, health, environment, quality of life, police and fire department services, property values, and infrastructure. To date, even before the proposal has been approved, Legato has not been a credible partner with this community, refusing our request to send a Legato employee to meet with us prior to the meeting, instead sending marketing and consulting consultants, who listened to us, but who were unable to provide answers to our questions. And to date, as of this afternoon, they say they did send us something, but apparently not answers to the questions that we had raised. I do not know whether Legato has a particular weakness in organizational structure and understanding citizen relations, but maybe they've never heard the word focus groups, and contacting civic organizations. It doesn't seem that complicated to reach out to the community. Legato's mission statement and its website state repeatedly that it seeks to build community, make neighborhoods stronger, and that it works, quote, "Closely with neighboring stakeholders." But it has not done this in Redondo Beach, and nor from press reports, has it done this in the other communities in which it is building. A question for you, the planning commission and the city, is have you done due diligence to ensure that Legato can actually do what it's proposing to do? Over the last 50 years, it says on its website, it's developed 48 projects, perhaps more, but it lists 48 in 50 years. Currently, it has five projects that it should be developing simultaneously. So the question is, can it in fact, with the history of, again, I'm just looking at the website, of developing one project or less a year, develop five simultaneously? It seems that that would be a question that should be raised. If Legato is allowed concessions by invoking State Bill 1818, what structures does the city have in place to hold Legato accountable for ensuring that the units that are specified as low-income will in fact be rented to low-income individuals or families? Can the city assure residents that these units will be maintained for 30 years as low-income housing? Do you have monitoring mechanisms and accountability?
Can you, can you wrap up?
Yes, sure, thank you. Other cities and areas within the Los Angeles County do not have those mechanisms. SB 1818 is being manipulated and used by developers to, for high density, and it is not being used for low-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Perry and Jeff Abrams, if you can come down, please.
I'm Carol Perry. I live on the 400 block of Avenue G, directly behind the proposed project. I own a condo, I've lived in the area for 40 years. I believe that the project as planned is incompatible with the neighborhood. We have a good mix of townhomes, condos, apartments, single-family homes, duplexes, shops, local businesses, and we have a real community feeling, which I see when I walk my dog and talk to neighbors and visitors in the area. People treasure this area. When I saw the artist's rendering of the project, it looked to me like a subway station that I've seen in the downtown Los Angeles area, the Wilshire and Vermont one, I think. And we're not LA, we're a beach community, and I think we want to preserve that lifestyle. And if we, if we go for a high-density project for stories, we can't get it back. I wrote to Councilman Member Ginsburg, and I got on his mailing list, I went to two community meetings, I spoke with Henry, I believe it was Henry, I said I was interested in talking to the Legato representatives. I filled out a card with my name, address, and phone number, I never got any contact, I never got the direct mailing. I did not go to these meetings because I was invited by Legato, okay? The neighbors that I've talked to, the large condominium complex across the street from me, Sunset Riviera, over 40 units, only one or two of those people got the direct mailing cards. Again, I think this project is incompatible with the neighborhood as planned. Thank you.
If we can have Jane Abrams also come down afterwards.
Hey, my name is Jeff Abrams, I live at 416 Avenue G, which is directly to the east of this project. I'm an 18-year resident of Redondo Beach, and there are so many issues with this development, I'll address some of them now. First off, Redondo Beach Municipal Code 10.2-900 addresses specific uses in MU3 zones, and it states, "Encourage residential use in conjunction with commercial activities in order to create an active street life, enhance vitality, and reduce vehicular traffic," which is all a great idea, except they're adding 2,600 cars a day to the mix, okay? Also, in subsection E, it states, "Ensure that the appearance and the effects of the buildings and uses are harmonious with the character of the area in which they are located." There's no way that that could ever happen, it just overwhelms the surrounding areas, this project. Then there's the issue of subdivision of the hotel. If the hotel is actually subdivided off the property, then the total lot size will be smaller by approximately .480 acres, which means you have to recalculate what the base units would be. So based on the city's calculation of one unit for every 1,245 square feet, which is 0.029 acre, the new base number is 1/30... 0.029 acre, the new base number is 131, not 149. And if you give them the density bonus, that means it's 157 units. Obviously, at that point in time, you would not need a third story on the project anywhere, okay? Also, it says, Redondo Beach Municipal Code 10 dash 2 dot 2112 says, "A development project granted a density bonus shall comply with the following criteria," and subsection E states, "The project is designed to be complementary to the character of the residential neighborhood in which it was located. This development cannot comply with this requirement. It is totally out of character with the surrounding neighborhood, and is so oversized that it overwhelms the surrounding areas." And last but not least, Senate Bill 1818 states that a city must grant incentives or waivers unless the city makes a written finding based upon substantial evidence that the incentive is not required in order to provide affordable housing costs. I don't think that this requires a bonus to justify this project. It also states that B would have a specific adverse impact upon a public health and safety or physical environment that cannot be feasibly mitigated. I think the traffic issue, pedestrians, bicycles, everybody wants to have more pedestrians and more bicycles. The problem is, when you get to that intersection of PV and PCH, you take your life in your hands when you want to cross the street. So I would take more time than what I have to go into the above, but I'm sure the city has legal minds to answer the requirements for denial of SB 18 density bonus. I'm not against responsible development in the city of Redondo Beach. It enhances the life and well-being of the residents and the city. The Legato project is not a responsible development and should be rejected by the Planning Commission that's currently submitted. Thank you.
After Jane, Ms. Marilyn Bradziewicz? Please.
Okay. Jane Abrams, Redondo Beach. As an 18-year resident and property owner at Sunset Riviera on Avenue G, I 100% oppose the proposed Legato-Redondo project. My objections to this project are many, and too many to discuss tonight. The plan calls for three oversized and out-of-character apartment buildings, mixed with commercial and a remodeled hotel. This overdevelopment threatens the quality of life in our neighborhoods. The outreach, by the way, has been minimal. Carol Perry, I've met her, and she's right across the street from us. She was at Jeff Ginsburg's meetings at the same time we were. We didn't get a chance, because there was a good-sized crowd, to talk to Legato personally that day in August and in October. At our address, and many of our neighbors, never got the 3,300 mailings. Back to parking. A massive underground parking garage with 552 cars with open 24/7 public access and no real security or management plan is Legato's answer to the question. Where will all the residents, their guests, shoppers, diners, employees, and some hotel guests find parking? Parking plans are in the documents posted at the city website. Details are often vague. For example, on page three of the February 2015 initial study mitigated negative declaration, it states, "Parking for employees of commercial businesses will be provided on-site." But where on-site? And how many? Where will hotel employees park? What about the leasing office employees? Another statement on page three states, "There will be a mezzanine parking field located off an access road for overflow commercial guests, resident guest parking, leasing, and overflow hotel parking. No capacity or number of spaces for this overflow parking field are noted on page three." Where off the access road will the mezzanine be? Why an overflow? In other documents, there's on Traffic Impact Study in Chapter Five, there's a comment about 60 residential guests can use the garage, but we, sorry, there's 48 spaces by a reciprocal agreement for the hotel, but again, no real explanation about this agreement. There's stacked valet parking on-site. Again, how many? Under the Section 10, again, back to the MND, page 67, Table 17, goes into all the comparison between MU3A and SB 1818. I won't repeat it here, but where will the 118 cars go to find parking when we're short 112 spaces? Street parking, as we've discussed, is not available. Shopping centers post, bold signs, no overnight parking. Riviera Village can't help with this relief. The reality is, residents of the beach cities own cars and do not take public transit. I ask you, as planning commissioners, to reject the project, keep Redondo beautiful, and find a more reasonable development. And if Legato wants to stay with this community, I hope you're listening tonight. Thank you.
After Marilyn, I have Michael Dube.
Hello, I'm Marilyn Bradziewicz, and I've lived here for 49 years in the house on Prospect Avenue. The cross-street is Palis Verdes Boulevard. And of course, the street was not widened when we bought, and we saw the traffic that came after and the accidents, and crossing guards have been hit there, two that we know of, and one down by Toledo School. We have three schools just within blocks and St. Lawrence School. And we see that they have the valet where traffic backs up on Prospect when you try to get home during school hours. We even had, where they put in a telephone pole, they could not do that until school, they had to do it at night because of the schoolchildren. There's, people use Prospect and Palis Verdes Boulevard like racetrack, and there's been one accident after another there. A few were killed. And, you know, it's a very busy corner, and I'm afraid this Legato will bring more hardship for our area. And I think a lot of them will go down Prospect to go around to get into Legato. And I think it will be a bit of an eyesore for the community. And the traffic on PCH, as we know, turning to go on to Palis Verdes Boulevard is a nightmare anyway. So you have PV people coming down there, and, you know, it's just a busy corner. So I would like to see something that is not so large and overpowering there. Thank you.
Thank you. After Michael, I have Bernie and Jackie Pusick.
Mike Dubey.
Can you receive a file?
Second.
Here, no objection. Go ahead.
I'm Mike Dubey. I've lived on Paseo de Granada in the Hollywood Riviera area for 29 years. I specifically want to address Legato's response to the Caltrans traffic impact analysis, itemized in Appendix J. The Caltrans analysis, first of all, is probably the most objective analysis we have at hand, and I would note that that type of analysis tends to be very generous, because they don't deal well with intersections that have very high stress and that are near saturation already. So you're looking at a best-case effect when you look at the Caltrans analysis. But what do they say? They say you've got problems. What are Legato's responses? First, they're, and I'm going to reference their numbers. Their 1.1 response simply says they're going to make cosmetic changes. They're going to do some restriping. They're going to lengthen some left-hand turn lanes. They're going to put in an official right-hand turn lane where people make informal right-hand turns already, so they're not going to do anything. Item 1.2, they're going to, their eastbound approach to Palis Verdes Boulevard has been negated by the Torrance plan, so they're totally back to the drawing board on that. Item 1.3, the revised right-hand turn entry/exit only is only going to add further load on the left-hand turn lane onto PV and greater congestion as people move into the Village and into the adjacent grocery store parking area. But it's item 1.4 that really takes the cake. Caltrans states, quote, "The project would add traffic to an already deficient intersection," unquote, "that is at the maximum load per city guidelines from Redondo and over maximum load per Torrance guidelines." This is where Legato seems to really start blowing smoke. They offer three responses. First, they talk about making changes to the PCH and Torrance intersection that's far less congested and really seems to have nothing to do with this area. To a naive reader like myself, this seems sort of a quid pro quo offer to the city to, in exchange, use the PCH and Palis Verdes Boulevard intersection as a traffic dumping ground. Second, they offer, second, rather than using the existing city guidelines, they use something called the County Congestion Management Plan. This is a developer's dream. It says you can increase traffic 2%, and then another 2%, and another 2%, and another 2%, and on, and on, and on. It's never significant, and as long as each project's less than 2%. But when you're already at max load, you've got a problem.
Can you summarize for us, Michael?
I'm sorry?
Can you summarize for us, Michael?
Oh, I'm sorry. Last statement. And then finally, they refer to the California Environmental Quality Act as some kind of justification. All that act does is says, "We won't kill you when we build this." It doesn't say we won't make you feel like you're living in hell once it's done.
Bernie and Jackie Pusick, and if I can have Susan Rennick come down, too.
Hi, my name is Jackie Pusick. I live on 410 Avenue G. First of all, I want to say that it's not rocket science to figure out the traffic is going to be congested or not. Just simply adding 180-something people, just have one car and one person leaving an apartment going in and out, on top of how congested it is, it's going to be congested. So I don't think we have to keep talking about it, and it shouldn't be even an argument to begin with. On top of that, I would like to point out the planning or the design of the whole facility that you guys are just presenting. No offense to beautiful presentation or whatever, but I'm an executive creative director managing $10 billion business every day. First, the design principle is basically finding what your audience are, you know, want, or their needs, what they want. We are the audience. We live here, and you guys totally disregard that what we are looking for. It's not overbuilt building and commercial building, and there's a lot of traffic. That's never what we ask for. So, no offense, your design is not as aesthetically pleasing as you guys are explaining. I just wanted to point that out, because none of those things that you guys presented is not a desire from any of us. So I just wanted to say that. So I would like you guys to actually really consider rejecting this project.
My name is Bernie Pusick. I live with my wife at 410 Avenue G, and I just want to express the anger, just sitting in here and hearing, you know, the two sides of how they take us to be kind of stupid or idiots. The parking and traffic is a no-brainer, and I think that using standards and whatnot is totally ignoring what the existing condition is. If you go to any beach city from Manhattan all the way to Redondo, there isn't a single parking lot that isn't overburdened. There isn't a single living area that has streets lined with cars filled. You can't find parking anywhere. So I think that the real impact to our living area has not been addressed at all. Thank you.
After Susan, Andy Shelby, please.
I just want to ask a question. When the yellow light goes on, I don't want to use my time for this, but I don't understand the lights.
You've got one minute after the yellow light comes on. So two minutes for the green and one minute for the yellow.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, my name's Susan Rennick, and I live on Avenue G, so I'm directly affected, obviously. I'm here tonight to state my opposition completely to this proposed Legato Bristol Farms project. The developer requesting this project estimates, best case, we understand, 2,600 cars every day through PV and PCH. These cars will not be spread out evenly over 24 hours. They're obviously going to be going through during peak traffic. Traffic in any direction on PCH now is a nightmare. It's already difficult, and we've hit that over and over, but I just want to hit it again. I see that the project proposes an access road, which will run along the retaining wall behind Avenue G, our living quarters. 24 hours a day, there's going to be apartment traffic, commercial trucks delivering produce, grocery items, restaurant supplies, durable goods, trash trucks, cleaning companies for businesses, parking lots, and public areas. The noise, engine exhaust, vibration, and dust from these deliveries and apartment traffic will be within 20 feet of our balconies, our dining room, our kitchen, and our bedroom windows. When it's hot, we'll have to close our windows and suffer the heat, or we can open them, and we can listen to endless traffic, arguments, lonely dogs, party people, loud TVs, louder music, car alarms in the parking garage, et cetera. Anytime spent on our balconies will include a relentless shower of exhaust, dust, and noise. The Bristol Farms building is architecturally beautiful, and it complements the small-town feel of Redondo Beach. Replacing it with a proposed high-rise glass-and-steel monstrosity is not an improvement. It only represents the financial interest of an out-of-town developer, and it's not acceptable for the future of Redondo Beach. I want to insert here that twice tonight, I've heard the density on Avenue G, the residential moderate density, as an example of how it's not that far from Legato's proposal, and it already exists, so we can match it. No, it's terrible. Have you ever driven down Avenue G? It's terrible. That is not moderate density, and matching it is a horrible idea. Aside from the traffic, crime, parking, pedestrian danger, pollution, noise, and introducing health hazards such as flies, pigeons, and rats that go with this kind of proposal, it's going to create an architectural nightmare and ruin the beach atmosphere we all moved here to enjoy. Please do not approve this project. We are at a density tipping point in Redondo Beach, and the future of Redondo Beach truly resides with you. Thank you.
After Andy, Adriana Shelby.
It's Arena.
Arena. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. They do that all the time. Hi, my name is Andy Shelby. I'm a 17-year resident of Redondo Beach, and the last 15 years, living just down the street on PCH from the proposed development. I'm a registered voter of Redondo Beach, and I actively vote in every election. I'm here to say that I am opposed to the Legato development project as proposed. There are many reasons for this, but I'll only touch on a few, as I'm sure, as we've heard, you're going to hear a lot from other people speaking today. The traffic and resulting safety impacts are my main concern. My wife and I thoroughly enjoy living in this area, and one of the reasons is the ability to walk to many places that we like to go to. We walk around the block a lot, and we walk to a lot of destinations in the Village, restaurants, go to Yogurtland, go down to the beach. We love walking around here. Today, when we cross the corner of Palis Verdes and PCH, we are very careful. This is a very busy corner. You really have to watch yourself when you cross that corner. I've seen a lot of close calls with the current traffic volume, and it frightens me to try to imagine what kind of traffic we'll have on this corner when this large, densely-packed development, as proposed, is placed in this area. I'm truly concerned for my safety, the safety of my family, and the safety of others. Also, the volume of cars will back up and congest this corner even more so than we see now during peak hours. My wife and I truly love living in this part of Redondo Beach and all that it has to offer, but this project, as proposed, is not only out of character... offer, but this project, as proposed, is not only out of character for the area, but there are safety, traffic, and congestion impacts that really bother me. To that end, I'm adamantly opposed to this development as proposed, and I ask that the planning commission members unanimously reject this proposal. Thank you.
Is it Ariana?
Arena.
Arena, sorry. Ray Benning.
Good evening. My name is Arena Shelby. I am a resident of Redondo Beach, and I live a block away from the proposed Legato project. I own my home, I vote in every election, and I am invested in this community. I care about what happens here. I am very much opposed to the Legato project for the following reasons. One, the sheer size and scope of the complex is completely out of character with the neighborhood. It would totally dominate the corner and not fit in with existing structures. It is too large for the location on which it would be built and would create a permanent eyesore. Two, the traffic on the corner of PCH and Palace Verdi's is already problematic. Adding 180 residential units plus commercial businesses will create a traffic nightmare in terms of the sheer volume of cars and trucks with long lines of vehicles for blocks in all directions. Furthermore, having only one driveway for turning left into or out of the complex near that very busy intersection will add to the huge backups, and many accidents will potentially ensue. Three, the increased density of people and vehicles will create a hazard for pedestrians in that intersection. I walk through that intersection all the time, and I feel like I'm taking my life in my hands when I do. It is already dangerous to try to cross the street. This project would magnify that danger to an unacceptable degree. Someone will inevitably be killed crossing the street. Four, the amount of parking that is proposed for this new structure is completely inadequate. The available parking spaces outside of the gated portion for residents are supposed to serve as customer parking for the businesses, overflow for residents and their guests, employee parking for the hotel and commercial businesses, and overflow for hotel guests. Each space only holds one car at a time. Expecting the spaces to do quadruple duty is ludicrous. Additionally, if the property is subdivided, as has been suggested, and the hotel is put up for sale, it will not have adequate parking. On top of these issues, there will be plenty of people from outside the immediate neighborhood taking advantage of free parking within walking distance of the beach. All these cars with nowhere to park will be scouring the local streets for any available spot, legal or not, and filling up spaces that are earmarked for existing local businesses. And five, the corner property is zoned for 149 units and 36 feet of height. If Legato was allowed to employ SB 1818 to get around that ordinance, it would be solely for the sake of making more money for an already wealthy corporation. I find it hard to believe that the city is so badly in need of nine units of low-income housing that it is worth 31 additional units and 20 additional feet of height on what would be an already large structure. The impact to the existing community is huge: increased noise, crime, strain on city infrastructure, and traffic and parking nightmares. I urge the planning commission to support the people who already live here and unanimously vote down this project that will have an adverse effect on our quality of life. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Burrow, Commissional Members. My name is Ray Benning, and I live at 211 Avenue G. Been there for 39 years, since 1976, and I rise this evening in opposition of this project. The project must be rejected by the planning commission. After serving two terms on this planning commission, I'm fairly familiar with your role as planning commissioners. Now, this project may comply with, let's say, the standards of the state law. However, there are other issues that this project may be rejected on, and I want to point them out. The project is out of place with the surrounding neighborhood. That's one. Number two, this project will have an adverse effect on the surrounding neighborhood as it exists today. Number three, this project is not compatible to the surrounding neighborhood. And four, this project is just too bulky for the surrounding area. It does not meet the current standards. Finally, the traffic study, I believe, is flawed. This project is going to create many more vehicle and pedestrian safety issues for the heavy travel intersection of PCH and Palace Verdi's Boulevard. It's already very heavy-traveled, and as construction goes up on the peninsula, more and more cars come down the hill using this intersection. There's only three ways off that hill. One is Palace Verdi's Boulevard, one is Hawthorne, and one is Western. Hawthorne and Western being far away from this project. So just imagine as that hill gets built, more floods down. Finally, I want to state that there was a couple issues raised here that I'm familiar with. When I was on this commission, I approved CVS, and I got stoned on that one. They said, "We'll put up 100 grand," I believe it was 100 grand, "and we'll carve a turning lane there on Torrance." So when CVS went to the Caltrans, they said it'll be a million and a half. Well, that's why you don't have it today. If these folks are going to revise this corner, I would think, or hope, that this city and this commission would demand that all these projects be approved prior to the start of this project, and number two, that the money be put up for what Caltrans wants, not what they're offering. And finally, I want to address a couple issues, two more issues. I attended a meeting about two years ago with Councilman Ginsburg, and I can tell you that there wasn't this many folks, but there was a lot of folks there. And the Legato people, basically halfway through, picked up their tent and moved down the street because people were just uproar. That was two years ago. About two months ago, I met with Henry. This gentleman here said, "Can we have a cup of coffee?" I says, "Fine." He says, "I'd like to test the waters. How do you think this project's going to go?" And I says, "Well, I don't think it's going to go, you know? Go talk to the people." Because I was familiar with what happened at Councilman Ginsburg's meeting. So having said that, and the traffic, living at the beach for 39 years, I can tell you on a given day, any time in the summer, or a warm day, you will not find a parking place from Pacific Ocean up to St. Lawrence Church in the 600 block of G. It's just not obtainable. Thank you for listening, and I hope you vote this down.
After Bruce, Don Zerlup.
Good evening. Bruce Zelis, I'm from the City of Torrance. Commissioner Gaines, you stole my thunder, but I think you're going in the right direction, and that's what I was really going to speak about, is I think we've got half a horse here in the fact that the infrastructure really needs to be done, signed off on, and put in place before a shovel is moved from that project. And all the maps there don't show the Torrance side, which, there's got to be right-hand lanes, turn lanes, left-hand turn lanes, and Vista Del Mar would be best suited to be cut off so that you can actually get that right-turn lane by Rock and Brews in there because that is a dangerous intersection if you're going to have a right-hand turn lane and also not cut off the through traffic from Vista Del Mar. That was my point. So please, have these things mitigated before a shovel is moved on this project. Thank you.
Can I have Robin Crevellet?
Good evening, Commissioners. Don Zerlup, City of Redondo Beach. You may ask yourself, "Why are we here tonight?" We're here tonight because in 1992, the city, under the encouragement and direction of our staff, decided that the major boulevard should be rezoned to MU3. And now they have an opportunity to bring before you an ideal MU3 development. And their concerns are that it meets with all of the criteria legally that would allow you to approve this facility. That doesn't have any consideration about the emotional effect of the people in the neighborhood or the emotional effect of what you have to do up there that is part of your job. And I hear the questions being asked of the applicant when I suggest that some of those questions should be asked of your staff. Why are they coming to you with a project with X number of parking spots? Why do they feel that this is a sufficient number of parking spots to actually work in this project? Not what the applicant's going to say. The applicant's going to say, "We talked with staff, and they told us this is what we're required, and we've added some to it." And that's really what they're looking to do to get it approved by you. Similarly, when Commissioner Gaines talks about Avenue I, I suggest, though I'm not certain, that that intersection is outside of the responsibility of this applicant to even address it. So the question is, why isn't staff addressing it? Why is, it's the city's responsibility. That intersection is neither adjacent to this project nor the intersection that this project is going to deal with. I'm not suggesting that you're not right. You are right. There is going to be a problem there, but I don't feel it's the applicant's problem. It's the city's problem. So as you ask these questions and as you make your evaluation of what to do, I hope you have a full perspective and ask the questions of the right people. Thank you.
After Robin, Linda Slade, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I appreciate you being here. I know it's a voluntary position and appreciate all the effort that you're putting in to hear both sides. I'd also like to quickly acknowledge, I don't know if you know, the dozens of friends and neighbors of ours that are out in the hallway and out into the street right now that have come to oppose Legato, just for the record. My name is Robin Crevellet. I'm a 32-year resident and homeowner and business owner in Redondo Beach. I am opposed to Legato/Redondo at 1700 PCH. My two major concerns are crime and safety. I personally was a victim of crime in a secured indoor parking garage here in Redondo Beach. I fear that the enormously large two-and-a-half-story underground parking garage being proposed will increase crime and personal violations to our local citizens. The city responded to my letter on record that the project of this density would definitely cause an increase in crime. I would like the safety and well-being of our residents to be considered before accepting such a dense housing project in our community. My other important concern is pedestrian safety. With an increase of nearly 3,000 cars per day, I feel that it would greatly increase the risk of traffic fatalities. Currently, with just the hotel and a few businesses on the Legato property, at least once a week while I am personally walking on PV Boulevard, I have to literally jump back to avoid being hit by a vehicle pulling hastily in or out of the driveway on Palace Verdi's Boulevard. I can't imagine the increase of near misses or, God forbid, hits from hundreds of anxious drivers pulling in and out of Legato's property. I want our pedestrian citizens to be safe on our sidewalks, whether walking, running, jogging, skateboarding, or innocently sitting in a stroller, as well as safety for some of our senior citizens who might not be so agile as to be able to jump back out of the way of a speeding car. We have lost too many of our beloved neighbors to traffic fatalities in recent months. We are sad, we are hurt and angry, and want to protect our friends and neighbors. We want to be safe and encourage new development that is in character with our beautiful Redondo Beach, which we all love and we're very proud to call our home. Thank you.
After Linda, if we can have Ms. Ellen, I can't read her last name, Marzarelli? Marzarelli? Ellen?
You know who you are.
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Linda.
Hi, my name is Linda Slade. I'm a little intimidated being here because I'm not a resident. I am staying, a friend brought me to this meeting, and he's gone. So I've listened to this meeting unbiased. I've listened to both sides, and I'm hearing, as I hear of all my friends in LA, traffic, parking, traffic, parking, wherever you go, it's the same story. So I am, I even may be considered one of those low-income families, and I'm feeling a little prejudiced against right now. I would be interested in an apartment, and I would be possibly low-income. I am not crime, I do not do crime, I do not do drugs, I do pay my rent on time. I am a beach person. I cycle everywhere. And the kind of place I'm looking for is a community. I am looking for a place where I can cycle to local shops and the beach, and I'm feeling a little prejudiced, a little at the moment, because I feel that Redondo Beach can offer someone like myself that. So I have heard what everyone said. There's a lot that I really like about this project because I have observed some other places that aren't, that I would not go near, but this is, I'm hearing, these people have worked towards it positively. My one suggestion is, if this road is such an issue, why isn't anybody suggesting building a simple pedestrian bridge across these roads like we have in Santa Monica? That's all I have to say. Sorry. Thank you.
You know, just for the record, so you know, we are not against affordable housing or anything. We just want to understand, please, and I get it, I get it. Family members have been in similar situations. We are not against that. We just want to understand what we, as a community, are getting into. Because as has been stated, this, whatever happens, whether it's tonight, down the road, this is a long-term commitment. We want to do right by the city, the residents of the city.
And after Ellen, we have Daniel.
It's Ellen Margatich.
Thank you.
Exactly like it's spelled. Pronounced. I have, first of all, I agree with everyone that said it does not fit the character of our neighborhood. I live on Avenue E, which is, I'm only two blocks from that area. I am between Palace Verdi's and Prospect, so we're in the 400 block of Avenue E, and we have over 26 children on our block under the age of 10. So we have a lot of young families that bicycle. We all walk to the beach, we all walk to the village, we walk around the blocks, and as everyone said, it is dangerous at the corner of Palace Verdi's and PCH. And several times, like everyone, you go, you hope to make it across the street. Tragically, we've had four people lose their lives in the City of Redondo, pedestrians that have been hit by cars in the last six months. So, you know, we don't want to add to that number, and I'm just about, I'm a little confused when Ms. Lee said, "This is going to improve the walkability of our neighborhood." Adding 2,700 cars is not going to improve the walkability of our neighborhood. Because those cars, not only at PCH and Palace Verdi's do we have to worry about, people are going to take shortcuts down those avenues. They're going to take the shortcut down G, they're going to take the shortcut down F, and they're going to take the shortcut down E. And they're going to park on E, they're going to park on F, they're going to park everywhere in our neighborhoods. And they may or not be convenient, but when their garage is filled up because everyone went to the beach and they parked in their garage in the open spaces, they're going to come onto our streets, and they're going to be racing down our streets. And we have all those children out on those streets because I've noticed F and G in the whole area, young families are moving in, we're getting many, many children in the area, which is wonderful, but the schools are going to be impacted. And I know the city said, "There's no impact on the schools," and I can't understand how you cannot have an impact on the school. You had 180 units, somebody's going to have children. Well, maybe not, unless it's just a big fraternity house and they have big parties there, but, you know, they may have children too, I don't know. Anyway, I just really wanted to make the point, you know? I don't think the whole pedestrian issue is getting enough attention. I know the traffic and pedestrians, you can't separate them. And it's just a problem for the neighborhood, and it just doesn't fit, and we just need to not put it into place. Thank you.
After Daniel Lewis Sells.
Well, I'll have to leave.
Okay. Thank you. Richard Norris.
Okay, I'm Ellen's husband, Daniel, and she said a lot of things very clearly, better than I can say. There are just a few things I'd like to continue with, the traffic and the parking. Now, there was some talk about a special right-hand turn lane at the corner. Now, there was some talk about a special right-hand turn lane at the corner of Palisverdes and PCH. And I wonder how the pedestrians would be able to safely cross at that point when the cars are free to make their corner without maybe stopping. Another point would be that we are newcomers relatively to Redondo. We've been here four years and we moved into a house on Avenue E. And we spent a lot of money fixing it up and our neighbors have come in and it's a very prosperous, nice place to live and we can really enjoy the beach here. And we have to walk to the beaches and walk to the corners. And we have these kids with their mothers, fathers, taking the walk to school, crossing Prospect on one end and going to the beach, crossing Palisverdes. And it's a dangerous spot. Now, the one thing that was mentioned earlier would be a signal on F. As you turn the corner on Palisverdes, you would leave PCH and you would go up Palisverdes and there would be a new signal created there. Well, once that signal turns red, you're going to have a backup of cars coming through the intersection. And that signal would be a hazard as much as an opportunity for us to cross that street. There are stop signs now and a stop sign's kind of a slow down. And if there's a gap, boom, they're gone, through that intersection. So we would hope that we would be able to preserve safety neighborhood, a neighborhood where property values would continue to be gained and we wouldn't lose property values because people would be scared of the traffic and the noise and the monstrosity on the corner that is proposed for this location. And I want to thank you for listening to us and I want to compliment all the prior speakers because it was, I thought, a fantastic albori by the community. Thank you.
After Richard, Christine Norris.
My name is Dick Norris and I live on Camino de las Calinas, which is, I think, off the edge of the world because it doesn't exist, it's a white area there. But I'm only like 50 yards from the property. Last September, I, as an engineer, we do things like this, I read 293 pages of the traffic impact study. Engineers do stupid things like this. And I found that it was flawed. There was a lot of errors in it, there was a lot of deception in it, and there was a lot of stupid proposals in it. So I wrote to, did Redondo Beach, heard nothing. So then I went and wrote to Caltrans, just pointing out the facts, not opinion, facts. And they wrote back to me and they outlined all these changes they wanted to do. But the very stupid idea was the turning left into the entrance to this property, which they said, no, no way do they do that, but that was proposed. So I don't have too much faith in what they're proposing. Now, if I'm looking at the codes, and the codes versus, it's the real world, that's what we're talking about, for these apartments, imagine the ad. What will the ad say in the paper that they do? Will say, "Apartment in Redondo Beach, some ocean views, walk to beach and to village where there's 50 restaurants and bars." Now, who will that attract? The young crowd. These young crowd, they'll sleep anywhere, they just want a floor space. So, so instead of having one in a studio, you're going to have, not two, we can have three in that, all with probably pickup trucks and SUVs. They wanted to park somewhere. So I reckon that the prediction of the population will be at least 50% more than what the code says. That means instead of having 2,660 cars, you're going to have over 4,000 cars per day. And I don't know what, the parking space, there's no other parking space, there's no overflow way of parking anywhere on the streets. So the whole proposal is out of whack. It's stupid, okay?
After Christine, Le, can you read that? Leon Bloss?
Luann?
Leon Bloss?
Lenore.
Lenore? Oh, Lenore. You're next, after Christine, sorry.
After me. Well, that's a shame he came first, that's my husband, because he took my notice, he said everything I was going to say. I'm against this development as is, but most of you up there said what I was going to say anyway before all this started. But I would like to point out, like he just said, about the young people and all the floor space, that was my idea. But the thing is, and the 260 cars going to 4,000, so, and the abominable parking, so I feel this is the wrong concept, in the wrong place, the wrong size, the wrong developer, and there should either be a nice condo development, or if Legato's plan should, if they still keep out it, it should be reduced by at least half, the apartments and the shops. And it has nothing to do with low-income families, they can have as many as they like there. I'm all for that, it's just the number is ridiculous. Thank you.
Or Patrice Rogers.
Lenore Bloss, lived in Redondo for 20 years, also was on the Planning Commission and for two terms. And I want to thank Tom for bringing up the issue about the mitigation for the traffic improvements and the CBS issue. Just for the record, it was $90,000. And as of July of 2013, when I asked Mr. Jones about it, it has been fully funded and it's still not done. So I'm really glad to hear that for this project, all this stuff must be in place before there's any occupancy. I actually support having apartments. I think we have lost a lot of apartments with the approval of condos and townhomes. And I think it's all about balance in a community, having housing that all levels of people can participate in. And regarding affordable housing, I think we will find that the people who work in the Riviera Village, there are manicurists, there are hairstylists, there are baristas and waiters and waitresses, they also very much appreciate having affordable housing because they do not have the money to live here in Redondo Beach. And I would much prefer they live here and be able to walk to work than to have to clog up the roads from Gardena, Hawthorne, San Pedro, or elsewhere, which really contributes to the overall traffic issues of Southern California. One of the things I'm concerned about on this project, in addition, is the success of mixed-use projects in the city. We had one at Avenue I, there's one at the 1800 PCH, and there's also one at the corner that's really the Torrance property, the condominiums. All of those mixed-use business areas have struggled. They've either been vacant, there's been a huge turnover, and some of them still have yet to be filled. So in looking at this project, I think it's important for you to question the viability of mixed use based on the history of what's happened in the city. The last thing is, there appears to be bike lanes that are on PCH, but they don't go anywhere beyond the project. And anybody who wants to ride a bike on PCH probably needs to reconsider and have their head examined to do that. I think it would be more important, and I know this is supported by the Livability Committee for the Beach Cities Health District, is to fund a study to have Class II bike lanes on PV Boulevard going from Torrance to Sepulveda. That is part of the South Bay Master Bike Plan that the city has bought into. And it is also part of the Living Streets policy that the city has adopted. So instead of bike lanes on a hazardous PCH, it would make much more sense in terms of the overall South Bay master bicycle plan to have the project fund a study to incorporate that on Palisverdes Boulevard. And the last thing I'd like to comment on is the, everything that Ray Binning said, I totally agree with. And also, I'm not going to go through that again, but also, the metal, glass, wood elevations of this do not fit into the character of Redondo Beach. And I think that, I know that Ms. Kroger has worked very closely with developers to enhance their architectural appeal, and I would encourage her to do that again as she has done on so many other projects that have been approved for the city. Thank you.
After, after Patrice, Bruce, Bruce Cocken, please.
Hi, my name is Patrice Rogers and I've lived at 712 Avenue C for 22 years. I'm going to be the spokesperson in an attempt to save time for many of the other residents on Avenue C who are also very opposed to this Legato project. And as I think everyone, where you are sitting up there and in the back, there really are two very common themes in those that are opposed to this. Number one, it is simply too large, to quote what you said earlier. This monstrosity does not fit in with the character of the neighborhood and we cannot accommodate the volume of added residents to that area. Number two is the traffic. It is already impossible to navigate and the concept of adding 3,000 car trips and all of the pedestrians and attempting to walk into our beautiful village and surrounding businesses is just not going to work. So I implore you, the Planning Commission, to please listen to all of us who here tonight are being very clear on why we are opposed to this. Vote no. I say to the Legato development, please go back to the drawing board, listen to, talk to the residents who this project is going to gravely impact, do your due diligence, and come back with a revised, smaller-scale project that will more appropriately fit the neighborhood. Thank you.
After Bruce, Don Moore, please.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few remarks. I'd like to reserve the balance of my time to Mr. Abrams or the engineer. I've lived in Hollywood Riviera since birth and then in between divorces, I've lived there on Villa Circula. So in essence, I've lived in the area 66 years and I think this project is out of character. I wanted to quote a friend of mine, Gary Holthausen, who's a probably new, Joyce knew, we all were in the class of 67 at South High. Gary has a PhD from Stanford in earth science and he says the entire Riviera is a sand dune. So I'm thinking maybe this project is being built on a material that could go into liquefaction. So I'm saying that as a political science major, but it is something to think about. Let's see, when you live in Hollywood Riviera, you can only get out by PV Boulevard Prospect or Calle Niore, so this intersection being blocked even more would make it really difficult for us. And then I guess the last remark is, I thought Ms. Lee was saying that when you're going northbound on Pacific Coast Highway, there's three lanes in front of, you know, the project. But then all of a sudden you cross the intersection, you're at the Fat Burger, there's only one lane there if the Avenue I turn lane is blocked. So, you know, this project will impinge real estate or, you know, property on down the line. So that's about all I had to say, but I would like to have Mr. Abrams come up and take the remainder of my time.
For Don Moore, we have Julie Moore.
I better not take much time then. I'm Don Moore, I'm a 28-year resident of Redondo Beach. But tonight I'm here as a board-certified crime prevention specialist, which is my day job. And that is one thing that we have not talked about, to my satisfaction at least, and I see nothing mentioned in the studies. You're probably looking at the artist's rendition from PCH where you can see the big monolithic three-story structure that has been so contentious tonight. I can cite some studies and I don't want to make the young lady from Santa Monica feel more put upon. If we could get 180 of her into that building, that might be, might assuage my concerns about crime. But there are study after study, most notably the broken windows theory by James Q. Wilson and George Kelling, and defensible space by Oscar Newman, that show that the higher, when you have common space in the middle, the higher the outlying buildings are, the more propensity for crime there is because the potential witnesses are further away. Now, in a condo building down on the Esplanade, that's probably not a problem because of the economic factors, keep people, again, the young lady notwithstanding, lower-income people and people who want to live in a studio or one-bedroom apartment of 550 square feet to 900 square feet, and I think it's a little duplicitous of the Legato people to say they haven't done a demographic study. I know that in your computers you have overlaid many times who you're going to be marketing to. It's going to be single guys, single people wanting to get into a small apartment, wanting to get closer to the beach, coming in from outlying areas, not the kids from Redondo Beach, and having an unsecured parking lot that they say is going to be the parking lot for overflow guests and visitors. That can't be secured after the business is closed at night. So anybody can walk onto that property and congregate in the unsecured parking areas and they're further away from any potential witnesses because of the height of that building. And it's cited in study after study, the two most famous are the ones that I cited and I'd be happy to give you all the background information that you need. But there's a sub-genre of security called SEPTED, which is an acronym for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And it's when architects and criminologists and security consultants and developers and city planners get together to design a combination structure that will resist crime and also be commercially viable. And nowhere in the supporting documents is there anything mentioned about whether this monolith is going to be secure. The underground parking, the overflow parking, the space at night, which is open space during the day, sure, hey, it's open space, anybody can come and visit us. So can anybody at night, so can anybody at 2:00 a.m., so can all the visitors that are visiting their friends at the beach because their friend has this cool apartment now. So I'm really concerned with the crime aspect. I'm also concerned with everything else that's been talked about tonight, but because my specialty is crime prevention, I wanted to mention that. So thank you very much.
After Julie, Andy Andrews.
Yeah, Andy.
Okay. Rhonda Cress.
Hi, I'm Julie Moore. I live in the townhomes on Avenue G. 28 years ago, my husband and I decided to buy our home here on Avenue G. We love the small-town atmosphere, fresh air, local businesses, good schools, et cetera. We left the west side of overdevelopment, surrounded by apartments, no fresh air, traffic, crime, car alarms, neighbors partying, neighbors arguing, and we paid the price to buy here in Redondo. I agree with what everyone's already said. I'm very concerned about traffic. Not a lot has been said about my street, Avenue G, where the parking is so bad. Right now, it is a thoroughfare. I can't cross Palisverdes to go even down to the car wash many times. I have to go around the block to wait to get to PCH because the traffic is so bad. No one stops, I should say no one, people slowly roll through that stop sign. So getting through is difficult now. I can't even imagine what it'd be like with addition of cars. And when the weather is hot and everyone's heading to the beach, it's twice as bad. There's cars up and down, cars are double-parked on our street, we've called to complain about this. I know police officers can't get out there all the time and do their job, but it is a significant problem for us already living on Avenue G. And the bicycle pedestrian safety is a major concern also for me. In addition to all the apartments, Legato's proposing retail stores, I agree with what one lady said about the noise, the engine exhaust and vibration and dust is going to be unbearable. We experience this already on a smaller scale with the Pancake House and PVN. I have called the hotel numerous times because of loud generators in the summertime, car horns going off consistently, and even people up on their roof yelling and partying and looking at where we live. Frequently, I'm awakened between 5:30 and 6:00 a.m. by deliveries at the Pancakes House. I have called the police department saying, "Isn't there an ordinance for this?" I have called the police department saying, isn't there an ordinance for this? Because it is noisy, it is waking us up as we sleep. I can't imagine what it'd be like with this project here. Also, the mega-development I hear will have air conditioning units. They generate noise. I don't know what's to block that noise from coming over. Right now, we hear everything going on at the PVN, we hear the Pancake House, I can sometimes hear conversations of who's waiting in line at the Pancake House. So I really don't know how we are going to have all these apartments with balconies and people outside and walking and air conditioning units, and we're supposed to be fine with that. I'm also really concerned with all the vacant businesses at 1800 PCH and the avenues, and yet they are proposing more retail. I just wonder how long before they too are vacant. Like I said, we've lived here for 28 years. Before Bristol Farms, there's music and nightclubs there, Annabel's, The Strand, Club Caprice. And the traffic and noise on a nightly basis was bad then, and this is just at night when there was performances. I can't even imagine what it'd be like if this was allowed to be developed. The mega-development is no way compatible with the character of the neighborhood. It's bulky, it doesn't fit in, it's just out of place. Please say no to this development proposed by outside interests who has absolutely no regard for the negative impact their mega-development will have on all of us that live here in Redondo Beach. Thank you.
After Rhonda Sung Kim.
Hi, my name's Rhonda Kress.
Sung Kim, sorry, sorry, Rhonda. Oh, go ahead.
I've been a resident for 30 years. I do live in the project that's directly affected by the proposed project. And I don't want to regurgitate everything that's been said eloquently tonight before me. So one thing that I think 41 of us that back up to that are very concerned about is the whole way the traffic is going to flow. You can't tell me they're not going to whip out that road, go right through our project to get out quicker. That's just going to happen. And the other thing that's going to happen is the retaining wall between our property and their property is going to be compromised greatly when all of this starts. So I would like to see something put in place where our wall is protected. Not the code, not, you know, I mean, something specific, just for our wall. Two more comments. One is, we've been called tonight Sunset Riviera Hollywood something, and we're not, we're Sunset Riviera. And the next thing was, I find it really interesting, one I've never gotten the mailer or anything else, but yet, years ago, when they bought the project and there was talk of something happening, I reached out and my neighbors, and they sent someone to my home, and I had a meeting. And unfortunately, it was a very polite young man that came, I think he was just right out of college, and he told us about this, this, that, and whatever, and we kind of boiled it down to, you know what, let's do what Torrance does. Put up your sticks and your flags. Let's see what you're really going to build. I haven't heard one word from any of them yet. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sung Kim. I also live in Sunset Riviera Townhouse, adjacent to the Legato project. I'm here today to let you know that I wish that you would oppose this proposed Legato project for many reasons. One of those reasons is the traffic safety. It is very dangerous there currently with a lot of traffic. With the added addition of the residents and the commercial property, I can't imagine that that traffic could be mitigated as it's stated now. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Burton Guillory.
Gillard.
Gillard. And Bud Vanderbilt afterwards, please.
Thank you, commissioners. I am also a homeowner on Avenue G. I tune in against this project. This project would fit nicely next to the Staples Center in downtown L.A., but it is not made for Redondo Beach. As far as traffic, far as I can see, the only way out of this project is to make a right turn. If you make a right turn on PCH, if you want to go south on PCH, you have to make a right turn on PCH, a right turn on Palos Verdes Boulevard, and then you're going to make a right turn on Avenue G. You do Google Map, Google Map would tell you to make a right out of the project and make a U-turn on Avenue I. That's not going to happen. So your next best bet is to make a, go on Avenue G, and Avenue G is already congested enough. And Avenue G on a Sunday, Avenue G and Prospect, you have all the pedestrians going to the St. Lawrence Church. And that intersection, right there, those crosswalks are always full during the day. So this attic traffic could be dangerous, and would be dangerous to all the kids going back and forth to church, the people going back and forth to church, and all the residents. And again, the traffic on Avenue G is already dangerous getting in and out of the driveways on Avenue G. This project is calling for, or saying there would be additional 3,000 cars. These 3,000 cars, all of them would not be going north on PCH like it seemed to be mostly discussed here. There will be people going south, and to go south, the best way would be to hit Avenue G. So for their report to say that there's going to be minimal impact on Avenue G, to me, that's just not logical. There has to be a lot of traffic on Avenue G if this thing is approved. Lastly, I really do hope that you oppose this project. This project is not made for Redondo Beach. Again, you put it downtown, downtown L.A., downtown San Diego, anyplace else, it would fit. Redondo Beach is not, it's not made for it. Thank you.
Bud Vanderbilt. Jill, Jill Veronoff.
Hi, I'm Jill Veronoff, and I'm a resident of the Hollywood Riviera for the last 40 years. And although I'm in support of low-cost housing and, you know, mixed-use development I have no problem with, it's the sheer bulk of it. We do know that Legato has maximized the density of this project by taking advantage of every legal and zoning tool at its disposal. And it wants a variance to build, to raise the maximum height to 56 feet, I believe. And that is not at the bottom of a hill, but at the top of the hill. And I feel that it is just way out of the scope of the neighborhood. What I fear is that we, in the Hollywood Riviera, really like the ambience of the village atmosphere. It's called Riviera Village. And what I don't want to see it become is what happened to Westwood Village, where it was a quaint, nice place where everyone wanted to, to hang out on the weekends, to visit, and then it became overdeveloped with high-rise, multi-use type of buildings, and it sort of just destroyed the ambience of the area. So today, Westwood is never referred to as a village anymore, and I don't want that to happen in our community. Thank you very much.
Peter Veronoff, Peter Salatone, Satyujan.
Good evening.
Hi, Peter.
My name's Pete Veronoff. I'm the husband of the lady that was just here. And we are residents, as I say, of Hollywood Riviera, been here for more than 40 years. And I'd like to talk to you about some concerns with respect to traffic. It's been brought up, I'm not going to repeat that. There's been a lot of good points made this evening. I'm the individual that filmed, if any of you have seen the links of some of the traffic that, I filmed that last November when I first heard of this proposed project, and I had concerns for what it would do to the community. I waited to actually write a letter to comment until after the final mitigated report came out, which was just a few weeks ago, and had a chance to look at it, wanted to see what Legato might do as a result of Caltrans's concerns. And the only change I saw fundamentally was the allowing only right turns on the Pacific Coast Highway, which again loads Palos Verdes Boulevard for anyone going south, as brought up by some of the people that have been here before. I was just very disappointed with the traffic analysis that was provided. My key concerns are, they omitted from the analysis PCH and Avenue G, Palos Verdes Boulevard and Avenue H. None of the traffic in and out of any of the four driveways was analyzed in terms of how many in the peak hours of the day and night, and which directions they're turning. No Riviera Village Way and Palos Verdes Boulevard, no Vista Del Mar and PCH, which an individual. Right now, people dive across two lanes in order to make a left-hand turn and go east on Palos Verdes Boulevard from Vista Del Mar. Now they're going to have three lanes, because we're going to move it over and make a dedicated right turn lane, so we're going to make that even worse. Okay? So the other thing too was, they did a traffic flow analysis, which is very good, and they used the standard Institute of Traffic Engineers numbers, which are not debatable particularly. But they basically said that there would be no impact north of Palos Verdes Boulevard on avenues G and avenues H from this project. If you look at the driveways on Palos Verdes Boulevard, it is impossible for a reasonable person to believe that no one will use Avenue G and Avenue H to access PCH headed north, or, and the numbers they used for the load on Avenue G are just ridiculous. So I'd like to see more numbers, I'd like to see the staff take a look at that traffic analysis, it seems very flawed to me. And with that, I'll leave it with you. There's been very good dialogue here tonight, and I hope you guys decide not to approve this project as currently mitigated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Schultz. And Tammy Riley afterwards.
My name is Carol Schultz, and I've lived at 1800 PCH for 12 years. And I love the neighborhood. I have many concerns about this project, but at the top of my list is the traffic situation. Just the other day, I was traveling south on PCH, coming back to my home from Hermosa, and I was in the middle lane, right next to where the left turn lane is at that intersection. And we were delayed almost two stoplight cycles while, because people trying to get in that left-hand lane could not get in there. You know, and they were blocking that whole middle path. So the whole path, and I was pretty far back, so there were a lot of cars ahead of me, and it was, and I just thought, oh my gosh, if that development gets approved, it is going to be a nightmare. Traffic could be backed up several blocks. I've been on PCH when that happens, and I just think that's really a bad intersection to have a facility of this density. Also, I really don't like the complex itself, and I just think that's really wrong for the neighborhood. I've seen, driving down PCH, which I do almost every day, I've noticed a lot of new buildings and new structures, residential and commercial. And many of them really seem to complement and enhance the neighborhood, and I don't feel that's the case with this project. And I urge you to vote no on it. Thank you.
After Tammy, David Garten and Kim Schaefer afterwards. Hi, Tammy.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tammy Riley, and I've been in Redondo Beach for over 20 years. I live on Avenue E, and also I've lived on Avenue G and also Avenue C, so I am definitely very familiar with the area. I am talking or hearing everybody about Avenue G traffic, yes, and parked cars on that street, it is very difficult there. But also, another area is Avenue E. Understandably, coming home or leaving to go to work in the morning or coming home at night, if you try to take a left out of Avenue E onto Palos Verdes or any other street out there, it's very difficult. We already have stop or speed bumps on all our streets out there, and a lot of people, if they're not going to wait to take that left from Palos Verdes to go on PCH, sorry, I don't have all my directions straight. A lot of people go straight, and they go down G, F, or E to get on PCH. They don't want to wait for that light, so they go through that and go through our communities. Another thing is, there is a lot of open retail space. There's the bank across from Pets 2 and Zana's down there. Even on Avenue E, the bottom Avenue E, Arby's is there, but there's a vacant pizza place that used to be on top, and there's a couple other places just south of that. So there's other retail spaces that I think we need to have filled first before we take a look at new retail spaces. Also, I didn't plan to speak tonight, so I don't have all my notes here, but I don't agree with this project. We have great beaches, we have great areas in Redondo Village already to walk, we already do that. My husband and I go down for dinner all the time, and we walk the area. We already have what this property is trying to bring. Please do not approve. Thank you.
David Garten.
Can I, he left, can I take his place?
We have a couple more lists. So yeah, no, you can bring that up, just pass your slip up. Kim Schaefer.
Thank you.
Sean Guthrie. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, Kim, you're here.
Excuse me, where's the light when it starts? The green light?
It's over on side, at the very edge of this, you see the green light?
So I'm starting, okay. I'm Kim Schaefer, and I've lived at the 1800 PCH condo for 12 years, I own that property. And I came here to amplify what everyone else has been saying, that I am very upset to have, upset about the size of this project, and also the increase in traffic, noise, pollution, and the strain that will place on our current infrastructures for water, police protection, fire protection, and sewer systems in this area. And as I sat here and I listened to Legato's explanation of the projects, the environmental impact reports and all that, I became upset because I've been in the, I was in environment health and safety profession for 16 years before I went into my business, and anything that they've mentioned for environment impact, it was just mentioned, there was no substantial support for that, such as if the environment impact report was completed, it would address aesthetics, noise, public services, recreation, transportation, traffic, the use of utilities and services. And with that said, I wanted to know, with the increase in the apartment buildings and businesses, how would that impact the treatment plant? Would they be able to handle that capacity? You know, so for this reason, I just do not think this project is a good idea, and for them to come here, to have the audacity to tell us that it's good for us, it's upsetting. Thank you.
Sean Guthrie, after Sean. Vivian.
Good evening, chairman, commissioners, and staff. Sean Guthrie, as a longtime resident, I've been involved with a lot of efforts to try and improve our community of late. I've been on the Beat Cities Health District's Blue Zones Project Livability Committee since it first came to town. And as a representative of that committee, I'm here just to, unfortunately, we are, our umbrella on organization Beat Cities Health District can't take any positions pro or con on projects such as this, but what we are interested in, making sure that every effort's made to incorporate as many of the Blue Zones projects, living streets, principles that have been doctored by the city. And as you've heard earlier from one of our committee, fellow committee members, that we'd like to see closer attention played to improving Palos Verdes Boulevard to the east of PCH in terms of looking at adding bike lanes and better pedestrian conditions that will encourage people to use bikes and walk to reduce the amount of vehicle trips that might be generated from such a project being added. So I'd like to submit on behalf of the Blue Zones Project a letter for your So I'd like to submit, on behalf of the Blue Zones Project, a letter for your consideration that basically outlines these points. Copies have already been delivered to the Legato people and the representatives, so...
Motion to receive and file.
We've got plenty of copies here.
There are no objections, sir.
Anyway, so in your final deliberations, hopefully you'll consider, because as also mentioned before, the City Redondo Beach has adopted not only the Living Streets policies, but also the South Bay Bicycle Master Plan, which has designated that PV Boulevard have bike lanes on it, that creates this network that will truly, hopefully, as time goes on, get people out of their cars and more onto bikes and walking. So thank you for your consideration.
Vivian, after Vivian Cliff.
Hi, my name is Vivian Juisti. I don't think we spoke enough about crime, honestly. I lived in 1800 PCH for nine years and a half. This has nothing to do with all the respect for low income. This has to do maybe with rentals. I live in a closed community, multi-use, and we have crime today increasing in the last few years. I had bikes stolen. Couple weeks ago, we had cars broken in inside the gated area. There's no security. I can't get home at 10:30 at night and smell marijuana in the parking lot, and kids with skates inside the parking lot. So again, I don't think we spoke about crime enough. Everything else, traffic, I back up everything that has been said, but we forgot a little bit about crime. Packages delivered FedEx, UPS, they have been stolen frequently, and this is inside the gate of the parking lot, inside a code, phone, or a key entrance to our place. So, you know, I cannot imagine how this is not going to fall into the same. School areas, I have kids in Tulita, seven, nine-years-old. The school is encouraging healthy habits and the walk-to-school bus that you probably is familiar with. There are 10, eight kids per adult walking those routes, Avenue G, H, all of those avenues, three times a week at least. So, traffic, cars, you know, I appreciate the remodeling of the PCH, but you're just making official a right and left lane that are there already, and everybody's using it already. And then, weren't we supposed to support local business? Like, are we bringing new businesses? Is our business in the Riviera and around doing so well? Or Tega 120 is the only restaurant that survived that area, and now we have Rock and Brew's. Like, so many, somebody mentioned that so many open places, 1800 PCH had the Japanese restaurant closed, had the cafe closed, the new place on PCH and Palos Verdes and PCH behind Rock and Brew's empty for how long? That place has been new, open, there's a gym, and I think another healthy place there. So what about our local business? And, you know, I hope we have enough water to build this too, because we're in a drought, and this monster construction, you know, would also take a lot. So I really hope you consider and, you know, make this at least smaller, if it's going to happen. So, thank you.
After Cliff, Gigi.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, City Staff, my name is Cliff Newmark. I'm a former council member in the City of Torrance, and I live at 116 Camino de las Colinas, which is pretty much across the street from the proposed development. First of all, I want to thank you for your service. I know it's 10:30 at night, and this is volunteer work for you, but appreciate the work that you're doing. The first question I had actually was for city staff. They're, I'm not very familiar with the Redondo Code Sections, but there is a Code Section 10-5.911 that refers to additional land use regulations for MU3. And I was wondering, does that apply to this provision or not? Is that Code Section applicable here? Because if it is applicable, this Code Section specifically says, "Commercial use is prohibited. Mixed-use projects, the following commercial uses are prohibited: animal grooming, bars and cocktail lounges, drive-up services, and hotels and motels." So I'm just concerned about whether it's that, if that Code Section's applicable, then the 186,000 square feet that's included in this development, which should exclude the hotel portion, which is, significantly reduces the square footage for the total project.
I think he's probably reading from, and I don't want to get into answering questions from the audience this evening, but that section prohibiting hotels is in the coastal zoning ordinance, not this zoning ordinance. So he's reading from 10-5.911. We specifically included hotels within mixed-use zones outside the coastal zone at this time.
Second question has to do with your mixed-use requirements for 1,245 square feet per, for the lot size. And I guess the question that I had there was, it seems to me irrespective of the amount of space that's actually dedicated for residential purposes. So theoretically, you could have one storefront in a mixed-use area, and/or alternatively, 75% of the space would be covered in, of commercial space, and yet you would still have the same amount of potential residences. The reasoning is that that's how you got to the 149 number. You used the entire 186,000 square feet, and that's how you got to the 149 number, because it's based on the total square footage. It seems to me it's a rather odd way of looking at things, because it's irrespective of what the actual housing portion is, according to the square footage. I mean, that's the way your code reads, but it seems to lead to something that could be, depending on how the project's developed, you could have a situation where you could have, like I said, 70% of the space is dedicated to commercial, and yet still have the same number of residences on this, in the area. With respect to the parking, your parking codes actually look at, are obviously significantly greater in terms of the number of spaces assigned typically, but the reason why you have allowed the number of spaces that you do is because of the density bonus. I think if you were to go back in the Code Section and look at the number of spaces that were allocated, it ends up to be about 420 for the residents, and with the hotel, it's another 110, so it's 530, leaving about 84 spaces for the remaining 37,600 square feet of commercial, which just seems very odd. It seems like not enough space for the commercial. And the reason why you have so many, you have so few parking spaces is because of the density requirement. And that's where I'll conclude. The density requirement is the state requirement, which allows them to go through a number of waivers, including the, which we've talked about, the parking, including the height, and including the number of stories. And it seems to me that that density requirement, which is really based on, or that density provision bonus, which is based on nine very low-income units, allows a lot of changes to the character of the community. And I would suggest that it's worth seriously considering the totality of the project. Number one, whether the density, it does meet the code requirement, which is that it's complementary to the character of the neighborhood. And even more fundamentally, as your former planning commissioner colleague referenced, whether it is, does indeed have no adverse effect on the abutting property or permitted use, and is deemed necessary to protect the health, safety, and general welfare. I'd submit the current plan does none of those, and therefore I would urge you to reject it. Thank you.
After Gigi's, if anybody that hasn't filled a slip-out wants to speak, please just queue up.
Good evening. My name's Gigi Gonzalez, and I live at, on Palos Verdes Boulevard, across the street from Legato. I never got one of their 3,300 cards, by the way. I wanted to address the outreach that Legato discussed earlier this evening, and to their statement to Daily Breeze. So Jeff Ginsburg, when he has the community meetings, the first Saturday of every month, are from 9:00 to 11:00. I can't remember if I went to one or two, where he said Legato was supposed to be there, and they didn't show up. And the time that they did show up, we didn't find out until we were there, talking about other things, and they showed up at 10:30. So that's the outreach. I did get a response from Legato, but it was, we initiated it, and that was on March 5th. I did hand Henry a card at Ginsburg's meeting, and I never got a response from that card. And then, a neighbor that lives on the 100 block of Vista Del Mar said he got a postcard, so I asked him if he could fax it to me, so I copied it, and I mailed that card in, and I never got a response. So I just, you know, I wanted to follow up with that. And when Pair Strategies did meet with us at the PVN, they filled out questions, they copied questions down, and they said that they would respond to us with all of our, with all of those answers. And I just want you to know that they did answer a few, but we're still waiting for the balance of those. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak?
I just want to make sure we reserve the right...
No, absolutely. I was just waiting for the last interview.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Marcy Guillermo, resident of District One. I live on Catalina Avenue and Ruby. I'm kind of far away from the project, however, it does affect me. Affects me, why, the traffic? Affects me because I do walk, and I hear the noise. But I'm here tonight to request that you oppose the project for all the good reasons, factual reasons, that all these residents have come tonight and requested of you. In addition to that, I'm going to say that the general plan was updated in 1992, and it's outdated, totally, totally outdated. If anything, we need to put a moratorium in any type of development, so that we update the general plan first. Third, I need to say that there is another development on the works, PCH and Prospect, for 52 condominiums, plus retail, plus office space, that that will create more traffic and more congestion to that area. In addition to that, you already know about the project that's coming up, uphill and PCH, more traffic. That PCH is already well congested. We have had so many accidents on that area. The one that you recall was the horrific, horrific accident on Avenue I, and that Avenue I is adjacent to PCH. Therefore, we need to look into that before we even go forward with any project that is around that area. Then what I want to say is this, when we have a project of this magnitude, we need to keep in mind the design. How are we designing our city with the pedestrian in mind? We usually talk about cars, we're going to mitigate traffic, but what about the pedestrians? That's something that we need to think about it. We need to make sure that our streets are safe and more walkable. And I'm going to reinforce the word, safe, because I don't want to see any more horrific accidents. You guys gathered tonight, we had so many close calls on that area. Then, the other one is, one of the environmental, when I was reading the environmental negative mitigated declaration, the review, the noise, I don't think it's have been addressed, all the concerns, this mildly significant, I see a lot of traffic there, commercial. And then the vibration of the air conditioners that they are planning to put in there. So that needs to be looked at. And then lastly, what I want to say is that, please do whatever, the aesthetics, aesthetics was not part of the environmental review. And that humongous building is our character with that area. So that has been neglected from that negative mitigated declaration. So please keep that in mind, and honor all these residents who came here tonight. Listen to them, you have Commissioners, past City Council members from other cities. This is the kind of crime that these residents are coming to you as your neighbors, your friends. Please do something about it. Thank you.
Will the applicant come up and address some, some or most of all of these concerns?
Well, before I let Fernando jump in, I guess, you know, I, I can, I think you can see that a lot of the concerns that were brought up tonight are exactly the concerns that I outlined in the very beginning. And that's because a lot of these people, traffic, parking, all those things are the same things that I mentioned at the beginning, and was responding to. And that's because I did hear them at the public outreach. And I also want to say, in correction of some of the people who spoke tonight, that we did a full two hours with Jeff Ginsburg, and on the other time, he asked us to come at a certain time and to leave at a certain time. So that was not, that, just for the record, that's what happened with that. And also, a lot of these questions are also answered in the MND. The MND basically points out that many of these things are, have less than significant impact. I understand, again, the reality of how one feels in an environment is different than what those documents say, but the traffic reports basically identifies what needs to be done. I'm going to go ahead and let Fernando speak for a bit, and then maybe I'll address a few more things.
Commissioners, again, Fernando Villa, I just have a few observations that I'd like to share with you and ask that you consider when you ponder the application that's before you. One is that we have worked very hard, as Heather mentioned, for the last two years in putting together a development plan that has evolved over time in great respects in response to the comments and direction of planning staff, again, who've put in much time and effort in helping us come up with a plan, which the administrative report that planning staff has presented to you conforms to the city's requirements and the state density bonus law that we've talked about, in every respect except, I believe, in two areas that appear to be relatively minor recommendations that we redesign. And we are going to work with staff to do exactly that. We think we have the ability to accommodate those two. It has to do with the increase in public space, I think about 13 or so hundred square feet, and to break up the backside of the project. That is a dialogue that we look forward to having with your staff. We have heard the comments made by your residents. We heard them loudly and clearly. We respect them. We want to reconvene internally to see what kind of a redesign that we think we can present that addresses the concerns and still presents a project that we understand, from both what the city's report says and what we have put together, is consistent with your designation for this property. This is the type of project that your own plans and policies envision for this property. Can it be worked, reworked, and altered somewhat? Yes, perhaps, and that is something we look forward to doing. But we ask you to consider that this is a plan that we think is consistent. This is a plan with your requirements, and those are the state, a plan that the city staff has also found to be so consistent, except in two minor respects, which we are going to discuss with the city. I also want to observe one or two things about the various concerns the residents raise. And again, we heard them loudly and clearly, and we respect them. They have the right to question the sufficiency, the validity of the findings in the MND, you know, whether or not it's been, the traffic analysis was appropriately sufficient. Commissioner Guy, and you mentioned several concerns you had about traffic. Was this study a sufficient study? That's always subject debate, and we appreciate that debate. I just want to suggest, though, the following to be taken into account. Number one, this is an MND that was not prepared by the project applicant. It was prepared by the city's experts. It was prepared by a traffic expert to substantiate the traffic analysis. That is, the city's experts. It was been fully vetted, not just by the city, but also by Caltrans, for example, in the case of traffic. In other words, the analysis, the care taken to look at those impacts was vested by the very agencies whose legal responsibility is to evaluate whether or not this project will create significant impacts. And if so, what does it take to mitigate those impacts? This MND is a product of that process, that we've worked with these two different agencies, and a consultant that has the expertise to put together this analysis. You, as a Commissioner, as a commission, have the right, under SEQA, and obviously your city attorney will advise you on this as well, but, and I'm not advising you, but you, as the commission, have the right to rely upon this study, because it was prepared on your behalf to help guide you in your determination of whether or not this project complies with SEQA. And that report... or not this project complies with SEQA. And that report says, in fact, this project does comply with SEQA. It does not mean that we don't have a continuing dialogue with the community. We want to do that. It does not mean that we won't try to work to make this a better project. We will try to do that with your staff, but we do want you to please consider that we've undertaken considerable effort to put together a plan that conforms to your requirements and conforms with SEQA. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that there were a lot of things that came up tonight that we'd be more than happy to address, such as crime prevention programs, having an understanding how mixed-use buildings work, separation between residential and commercial. They talked about showing exactly where height is going to be. That's perfectly fine. There were a lot of things that we can do. There were some questions about condensers on roofs being noisy, and I have to have our lead consultant here. If you want to take 30 seconds to hear about why condensers are not going to be noisy on a brand-new building and the number and why, if you want to hear, he's available. Other than that, I would really request, as the applicant, that the planning commission give me very specific feedback about the direction in which you would like me to address this project, and I'd like that to be given to me with very, with a great degree of specificity.
Okay. You, you do have a copy of, of the staff report?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
But if there's anything else that came up that, based upon this information, then I'd like to be advised.
We will deliberate and...
If the, if she's, if the gentleman's here that can address the AC noise, you said it was 30 seconds. I'll give you a minute, so. No, excuse me. This is their time, please. They were very respectful to you guys. Please show the same courtesy.
Travis Edge with Green Dinosaur, we're the energy efficiency and sustainability specialists for the project. With respect to the, the AC units, or specifically the condensing units which would be located on the rooftops, the specific units that are in use today are very high-efficiency units, which are designed specifically to function at very low noise levels. That's not to say that there is no noise. Placement on the roof will be strategic to place them inboard so that that noise is not discharged towards the exterior. And finally, we're also going to look at possibilities to combine the various number of condensers and share condensers so that there are actually fewer fans and fewer moving parts to those systems and which will ultimately reduce the amount of noise being created.
So let me ask you a quick question. Do you guys have studies or data that says at 50 feet, at 100 feet, we can expect to have X dB?
We have not done those studies yet, but those studies can be done and would be done.
They certainly should be part of this if, if we move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, I had a question for staff regarding the average persons per unit.
Motion to close the public participation portion of the hearing.
Second. Here are no objections to order.
I had a question for staff with regards to the average persons per unit in Redondo Beach as it relates to studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom. Have those been communicated to the applicant so that they can try and abide by those and...
Well, absolutely. There are a couple of different controls at work here. The, the city's average household size, for the first time in the last two census cycles, has gone up for citywide average of 2.31 persons per unit, and that includes homes, and that includes, that's 30,600 housing units citywide. The city, however, cannot control definition of a family and who wants to live together, so that, we cannot place a limit on specific occupancies of, of units. You know, I've, I've done some math here at 2.31. That's not inappropriate. We could do some estimates. If the commission is going to look at further work on this, we certainly could come back with some anticipated occupancies based on probably single professional empty nesters, which tend to be the occupants of these types of units.
Commissioner Guy?
Well, I want to clear up earlier when I mentioned to the Leggardo staff about the intersection across the street from the project. So I'd just like to make clear, my position is that I don't care who's responsible for it, if it's the city, if it's Caltrans, if it's Torrance, but if we do traffic mitigation exactly in front of the project, which results in higher traffic across the street, without having that mitigated at the same time doesn't, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. But I did want to share with the, my, my point of view is the traffic study is, it just doesn't seem to jive with real life, living here and being in the intersection all the time. It doesn't say, but in all fairness, I have to say the following. I said, you know what? I'm going to really submit my argument by getting the actual traffic count on Pacific Coast Highway for the last 30 years. I hate to tell you this, but it's down. The actual traffic count on Pacific Coast Highway in 2013 is less than it was in 1988. I don't know what it means. Maybe what traffic we have is all at PCH and Palasverdes Drive, but I, I, I asked for that information and I got it, and I just wanted to...
Where did you get it from?
That would be your Caltrans. And, and unfortunately, honestly, the only place they, they really count is Torrance Boulevard and PCH.
Calm down.
I shared this information with you in the spirit of cooperation, not hostility. Now, now, now. Boy, you guys aren't cutting slack for anybody. Well, it's still my turn.
Ma'am, could, do you, you want to come up to the podium? We can, if you want to come up and have...
My point is, if all businesses are successful, the traffic's going to get worse. Yes, and I hope the businesses are successful. So we, we have too many vacant businesses on Pacific Coast Highway. One of, one of the only other things that has always come to my mind when I drive through Manhattan or Hermosa, I don't see a lot of mixed-use. But when I get here, I see it, and the projects that have been outlined, I'm in no way to, to imply that Leggaddoes are professionals. They know what, you know, they know what they're doing. I don't know, but I don't, I don't get it. So I'm a little bit confused because the mixed-use projects that we've had, it seems like the commercial component of it has been... But then again, you know, I, I guess I didn't put the money up for the project, so. To do that. I think the traffic situation is just going to be untenable. I think the project is, is just too big. I don't know. You're booing me a second ago.
They are a fickle, a fickle crew, aren't they?
Fickle group, boy, I'll tell you.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, again, I don't think anybody up here is opposed to affordable housing, but it needs to be tempered with whatever project we do here. And, and one thing that concerns me is a statement made earlier in the evening that, quote, if I have this correctly, quote, "Legado is taking advantage of the law," end quote. I get that. But one thing I also heard tonight was that I didn't hear anybody outright say, "We shouldn't do anything." So to me, that means that, wow, there's, there's a lot of open room there for dialogue. So, hold on. This is my time now. So, in that spirit, I, I think we have something to work with. So I, again, I encourage the folks at Legado to reach out to the neighbors beyond Mr. Councilman Ginsburg's meetings. I encourage the folks at Legado to also invite us if they think we are important to be there. Again, it's purely up to them, but, but I...
Go ahead, Chair.
No?
No.
The Commissioners, I would advise not attend any meetings because you're, you're sitting as the body deciding this project.
Okay. I withdraw that statement. I don't want to know anything until the next public hearing. Is that clear enough, Chair? Thank you. But we have something to work with here. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Guy?
I, I think, I think, I'm hopeful there's something to work with, and I'm, I'm just, from a procedural standpoint, what I don't understand is that, I don't know if it would behoove us to take a straight-up-and-down vote yes or no tonight.
Yes, it would.
Or set a time in the future where Legado can get back, I mean, first of all, about taking a vote, our own staff recommends we don't approve it.
Correct, and...
Our staff recommends we don't approve it. Do we want to have a vote? Do we want to have a vote, or do we want to postpone this and give these people a chance to respond to your?
The, the only caveat from our office is that if the Commissioners decide to deny the project, or you're going down that road, that you provide, you continue the public hearing, and you provide staff and our office an opportunity to come back with appropriate findings. In order to deny a project such as this, there are certain steps that need to be taken, one of which is to conduct a study regarding that denial. You, you look at the impacts on, and I can get the exact wording. It's in the staff report, the economic, social, and environmental effects before a denial is actually voted on.
I guess my question is, before we take a vote, and if it's denied, why don't we set a timetable for them to respond to your concerns, for Legado to consider a different outreach?
That's part of, some of the stuff that we, that we need to cover. That's the first portion of getting feedback from Legado themselves to see if they'll agree to some of the changes, to then continue the meeting to see those changes. So that's, that is one of the options. We had a staff report.
I read that. But I, but I asked the specific question, if we're going to take an up or down vote?
We have to see what we're going to do first.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay. No, carry on.
No, go ahead. No, you go ahead.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I'd like to make a motion that we consider tabling this to a time till Legado can come back with some of the recommendations that we make and come back with a different plan, a modified plan.
And I would, if that's the commission's desire, I would just modify that slightly, a motion to continue this hearing.
I've got a couple of things to ask from the applicant first. Okay. And if, and I would like to ask the applicant to come up just for, for a second. I, I heard two different things from Heather and from what Fernando said, if you can join up too, because what Fernando was saying is, you're willing to, you know, to work with us, and you're, you specifically said about the area and working something with the building. And when Heather came up, you said you want specific direction to what you want me to do.
We're willing to work with you if you provide specific direction as to what you'd like to see.
Okay, so how specific on the 1,300 square feet? Do you want specific, exactly 1,300?
Well, actually, in fact, that 1,300 square feet does already exist on the project. We have room for public open space, and it was in the project, and we were asked to remove it from the project about a few days before the plans were submitted for public review. And so we took it out, as was requested by us, by planning staff, but that 1,300 is available in the project.
Okay, so that's, that's insignificant for this discussion. The more important one is the building itself. So once again, you're, you're, you're willing to work with us, but specific, the, the specific items at this time basically fall with a few things, with staff, what they're recommending to do, the additional public outreach that you, that I believe you have to do, and I think it's obvious that needs, that needs to take place, that, you know, we've sat here and have sent the actual power company back to meet with neighbors because of a tree being, being cut, and for the size project and the work that you're doing, it just, you know, it, it fails in, in any form of outreach. And I, and I think you and I met in November, and, you know, there's a lot of stuff that was addressed during, during those conversations, but the level of, of outreach, I mean, you have everybody's name. I think you know everybody's face, and for all the time that you'll continue to spend in town, I think you, you can set up meetings in different places, and I think we need to see some shaking heads instead of nodding heads. You know, just, we want to change that.
Okay.
So I guess with the motion that's in place...
Well, Mr. Chairman, maybe I could just kind of inform the discussion a little better. Given all the testimony we heard this evening, I think it's important that the applicant recognize that the public's input's valuable here. The commission did hear that, and that they worked towards addressing all of the issues that were discussed this evening in their, in their design modifications and answering questions that were asked this evening. Of course, staff will be working on these questions and validating that the answers are correct. We heard a number of comments about additional outreach. I sense you've already provided that direction clearly. There were questions about traffic mitigation and ensuring its, its completion, parking design, and parking adequacy, many questions about compatibility, scale, design, massing, bulk, too big. We heard them all. I think those need to be taken to heart by the applicant, and I, I just want to make sure that the commission's giving direction not to just come back with a cosmetic redesign, but they want to see significant work towards a project that really works with the neighborhood and we feel is compatible with the neighborhood. We have a complete record of every comment made this evening, and I have them by categories and comment type, from noise on through to pedestrian safety. We have to have answers to all those questions. Before we come back, I would suggest at least a 60, 60-day continuance at a minimum. That just sounds right. I don't think 30 days is going to do it, so if you want to look down the calendar, that would be a good idea.
Well, I want to, want to ask the applicant also that, that the story, you know, for, for the next meeting has to have a discussion of what that outreach was and how those comments were, were incorporated, because even with the work over the last two years that's been done, there was, you know, no feedback of, well, this is something that the public wanted, and this is something that we did. It was, we stuck to the code, and this is what the code says, and this is what we can do. And if you look at your application from two years ago, it basically has the word entitled throughout a whole bunch of places. And I understand entitlements, and I understand the, you know, certain rights that you have, but I think your entitlement takes place in this room with all these, with all these folks. So there has to be everybody's, you know, that granting of right to do certain things. So are, so is May 21st enough time for you guys to...
Well, I would, we would work expeditiously to try to get all of the items done that we would need to bring back and would hope to be scheduled as soon as possible without looking at any particular date, you know, just as soon as we're able to pull everything together.
So...
It might be sooner than that.
Well, I guess we would want, staff, 60 days?
We would really prefer a date. It, it's, provides clarity to the public, and it gives us a timeframe to work towards. If we didn't have it completely done, we would still come back and give you a progress report, or, or provide advance notice that, that the meeting's going to be continued again, but we, we would like a date.
So I think to be safe is 90 days. I think something...
We would ask, we, we agree with the suggestion by Planner Aaron Jones to push this to a date, 60 days from, from now. We think that gives us enough time, and as, as Mr. Jones mentioned, if, if for any reason we're not done, we, through your planning staff, could provide the commission an update of where we are with our efforts. But I think 60 days sounds about right to us as well.
Okay, so Commissioner Rodriguez...
The date is May 21st.
So I'd like to make a motion...
Amend, amend your motion?
Yeah, I amend my motion to continue this to May 21st so that the applicant can address the concerns, do the community outreach, address all the concerns that Aaron has, including the security study, working with a security firm to make sure that it's designed in such a way that the building takes into consideration security for the residents, the building design elevation on the east side being too massive, and the adverse effects on the... and the adverse effects on the surrounding areas, the surrounding properties.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, a second.
Do I have a second? Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We earned our salary tonight.